All right, so we're live. We're kind of welcome, everybody. Welcome council staff. We're here today for the committee of the whole discussion on the 2022 municipal budget. I'll start off by just saying, you know, this certainly today is a culmination of of several meetings, both at a staff level and at a finance committee level. And also the culmination of a lot of hard work and efforts by staff. So I want to certainly acknowledge Jennifer Barra for her leadership in budget preparations. And also Erin Broomer, acting treasurer and her staff for all their support and efforts as well. So today's budget has been again vetted through many means with senior managers and with finance committee. And we're sit here today to to bring the review and discussion to the council table for all council to be brought up to date and to have input and to ask questions and seek clarity. So without further ado, I'll maybe turn it over to you, Mayor Edie, as Chair of Finance, for just a comment, and then we can get right into the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's a good day to get here and get this done. We've been, it's been a tough year for everyone. But just make note, the last year, we passed your budget on the 27th of April. So we're not really, we're not really much far behind with everyone with going through, not having a treasurer full time and COVID, going through the office, et cetera. So I think we're in pretty decent shape. And I think you may find this budgets slightly easier to understand than past budgets. At least I do anyway. And so having said all that, we'll save my thank yous till after, just in case things don't go well. And I'm sure they will. Anyway, so welcome everybody here this morning. And I'll turn it over, I guess, Jennifer, are you?
Yeah, I'll take the lead, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, welcome, everybody, to 2022 budget presentation. This is for committee of the whole, so this is not for passing the budget. This is our first run through with the, with entire council, the ones that are present. And then hopefully, it all goes well today, and we'll go forward to a council meeting. So what we're going to cover today is the capital budget financial summary. Oh, see that I have that in there twice? So what we're going to cover today are the four schedules. Schedule A, B, C, and D being equipment, rolling stock, facilities, and the road infrastructure. Then there'll be a summary to kind of merge all those together. I'll give you an overview of the total impact. We'll have a look at the reserve schedule, which includes capital and operating transfers to and from. We'll have a look at the payroll schedule F, which is a summary of all 2022 impacts. Then we'll go into Schedule G, the operating budget to budget comparison by department. We'll go through a few of the budget highlight notes. A summary of the actual levy increase, where it stands today. The impact on the medium typical properties. And then a final recommendation from the senior management team. So that's the structure for today. We're hoping we'll probably break around 11:45 for a quick lunch, maybe half an hour, and truck on through. So the first one is the equipment. So this slide definitely is small, so I'm going to go into PDF so that you'll be able to read it on the screen just a little bit better. Bear with me one sec. Just make it a little bit bigger. It's gonna... Can you guys read it from out there? Kim, Don, still too small?
Some of the older people are having problems.
A little bit bigger?
A little bit bigger, please.
A little bit bigger?
That's good. That's excellent for me.
Okay, you also have a paper copy, so you might want to keep an eye on your paper copy, and I'll go back and forth. If there's a certain area I want to highlight, I'll use my cursor and move it around just to help you a little bit easier to read it around the screen. So one thing I wanted to highlight, in every single sheet, you'll see that you've got 2021 budget, 2021 actual, and those are where they stand today. We're still not completed the year end, but it's fairly close. I'm fairly confident that you won't see too many changes from those numbers. Anything that has an arrow, you'll see here, there's a bit of an arrow. And this is consistent across all your schedules. If it wasn't completed in 2021, the senior manager wanted it carried forward. I just put an arrow, carried the budget forward. If any of the budgets increased, maybe you can direct those questions to the senior manager, and they can explain why those budgets increased or modified, okay? What else to note? On the bottom, about halfway down, you'll see kind of highlighted in a peachy pink color. That's the grand total of your expenditures. So that's what you want to, that's what you're going to expense for equipment, for example, for 2021, is $385,029. Okay? And then below that, and this is the same for each schedule, below that is how you're going to pay for all those expenditures above. So in the case of equipment, you're going to be using $280,000 and change from the equipment reserve, $20,000 from a miscellaneous reserve, $151,750 from a grant. So that's going to leave you a balance remaining at the end of December of this year of $378,70. So that's an unfinanced amount. Okay? And then just below that, you'll see the balance that's in your equipment reserve. So one thing that's a little bit new in this schedule compared to previous years is you'd have to go over to your reserve schedule to find out, what do I have remaining? So I've added those totals on each individual schedule, so you're not flipping back and forth. So it's a bit of a, just a little bit of an easier read. Any questions so far? I do have a tendency to talk fast, so definitely interrupt me. So what's on the table for 2022?
If I could just interrupt you for a second.
Sure, you can.
I can't see everybody in the room all the time, so if you do have a question, just speak up and, anyway, if you don't mind.
Okay. So for 2022, under the equipment schedule, we have a radio system upgrade of $70,000. A speed indicator sign of $6,000. Mechanical diagnosing equipment of $10,000. Now, that's a new item. It's never, it's a new asset to the municipality. Communication equipment of $20,000 in the fire department. $10,000 of bunker gear. $15,000, sorry, did I mix up there? No. $15,000 of SCBA's. Recreation of floor scrubber, $12,000. And then some miscellaneous items, we have the place structure at Madaway, $249,750. Bodyworks equipment for the new Madaway facility of $150,000. Gymnastics equipment of $100,000. Sound system of $80,000. And ball diamond fields of $100,000. Sorry? Did I read that right? Okay, just want to make sure it wasn't on the right line. That's what happens when you got to expand it there. So that leaves you for equipment at the end of the year of $378,70. So what I'd like you to do now is just go carry that number straight across to the end, because this is a 10-year forecast, and you'll see a nice big red arrow. So what that's telling you is that you're going to have a surplus of $10,000 at the end. So you have sufficient dollars in a 10-year period. So even though you're not going to pay for everything this year, it's kind of an up and down value. And what's important to also look at is the line below it, is the balance that's sitting in your equipment reserve after each and every year.
Okay, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
So the brackets, the brackets around the number are a surplus?
Yes. Yep. On this one, yeah. So, and it's the same for each schedule. So when you see a balance unfinanced, the next year, you're going to see that number changes. So it's whatever you got available for dollars to finance the projects in that particular year. So what you always want to look at is, what do you have left on finance? And what do you have remaining in your reserves to pay for those unfinanced amounts? So even though you're not going to pay for everything in 2021, over a 10-year period, you're still sufficient in your equipment reserve to fund those particular projects. Have I confused everybody? You're okay? So any more, any questions on Schedule A then, or we'll go through to the next one? I'll make it a little bit bigger as well. So as we go to each one, you'll see they get a little bit bigger, because there's a little, there's a few more items. So rolling stock.
That's a bit too big.
Too small? Okay.
Just going to move it over. You guys don't need the vehicle numbers.
Okay, so rolling stock for 2022, we have a sterling tandem that needs to be replaced, budget of $320,000. Ford crew cab. 106,315. Cat backhoe of $14,000. That's attachments? I'm just going to make a note of that and change that schedule. Okay, but I think I should change that description. The backhoe is attachments. That makes more sense with the dollar value as well. And trackless attachments, $30,000. A half-ton vehicle with harness, plow and harness, $70,000. A new Chevy Silverado long box, $50,000. That's in the rec department. New ice resurfacer, $89,000. So that's been, that's been shifted inward, so you see the hours, the arrows going the other way. Groomer for $10,000, so total expenditures for rolling stock is $689,315. And the way those items are going to be financed is $378,900 coming from rolling stock reserve, $20,800 from the ice resurfacer reserve, $212,402 from unallocated, and that's to finance the balance of the pumper that was purchased in 2021. And then we have some trade-in values on the old ice resurfacer of $23,000 and vehicle 17 of $4,000. So the balance that's going to be remaining at the end of December 2022 is $262,615. So you'll see there's no monies left in rolling stock reserve, and there's no monies left in ice resurfacer reserve at the end of 2022. So going forward, it's important to note, this is one particular area that I've noted with the finance committee, that in the future, you may want to start adding more funds to your rolling stock reserve, because you'll see it's a zero balance. You don't have sufficient funds in that one particular reserve to finance your future costs until year 2031. That's if every single item is addressed in here. You'll see those numbers change going forward as the asset management plan gets updated as well, which is currently underway. I would suggest probably putting a little bit more under ice resurfacer. I don't think it's a reserve that it's been particularly looked at over the last 10 years. You know, and it could be small amounts, $500, $1,000 when there's budgetary room, and that definitely will help you again in the next 10-year cycle. Mike?
Yeah, I'd just like to raise as well, just the situation that we're finding with vehicles, rolling stocks, trucks in particular. There's very much a shortage of supply and a sort of a bottleneck in the manufacturing process, even getting down to the chips that control the vehicle. So right now, to order a vehicle is very, very difficult, and that's driving up the prices as well. And I think we're finding that the prices are a challenge. I know even with the unit here that we have V17, even trying to secure one is going to be a challenge. And there's, you know, as soon as they're manufactured, they're pretty much sold even before they hit the lot. So, you know, we may be able to secure a truck this year, may only be delivered next year. But, and even then, unless it's manufactured, the dealers are reluctant to commit to a certain price, right? So I think all the municipalities are really facing a real challenge in trying to get vehicles and trucks, and that's going to be ongoing. But I think our pricing model that we've experienced in the past, we're going to see inflated prices over the next few years for sure.
Yeah, just further to that, Mike, too, probably, I won't be too many years down the road. We're going to be looking at electric rather than gasoline, so that could really end up changing the pricing again. So it's, that's a whole different issue.
Just, just if I could, while we're speaking to that, the situation, we're in a very similar situation with the ice resurfacer. And with the lead times that we had to secure the, to get in the queue of construction, you know, we, we had put in to have the ice resurfacer purchased this year. Then the war happened. Every other ice resurfacer that comes off the line at Olympia where we have secured it goes to Russia. So now, they're way ahead, so they've called and asked for our color code. And I said, well, I got a real problem here. We haven't have it, we don't have it approved at council yet. So, you know, I anticipate that it will stay in the budget. But it's something that, on this situation, normally, we're about a year out. So I had to secure it to get it in a year. But then with what's happened with Russia, Ukraine, they're not shipping any ice resurfacers to Olympia, or from Olympia to Russia. So we're in a more positive situation. So it's something that I will have to advise them, and I told them that we're meeting today. So if that's something that's not going to occur, the ice resurfacer, then I'd like to contact them today and say that, you know, we'll have to cancel the order. But it is ready to, for their paint color. And more positive note, the Tim Hortons who are currently sponsoring it have committed to another five-year commitment of $2,500 annually. So they've committed $12,500 towards the purchase price of the new ice resurfacer, which we put into our operating advertising budget. It's not something that we can reduce the capital cost on, but there is revenue there that we are contributing five bucks per hour of every ice hour booked. Those numbers will start doubling up with two pads. So therefore, there will be enough revenues in the reserves when that ice resurfacer is replaced in eight years. So it's a positive situation on the capital side. It's just I needed to let council know, because if there is an issue with that specific line, I'd like to cancel that order today, so.
Just a question on that, Kevin, if that order was canceled, do you recommend it be canceled for another year, or?
No, I really don't. Now that, now that Tim Hortons is on board and they've provided me with the color that they would like the ice resurfacer painted, it's just, we're going to receive the ice resurfacer. We looked at securing it back in February, I believe, that we did the, you know, getting the price quotes and doing that, anticipating receiving it upon the opening of the expansion. But again, it was the war situation that has them able to provide it to us quicker. And I just said it's still in the budget, and, you know, everything's still positive. It's just, I fear canceling it, and then we may not receive it till next October or what have you, so.
That's fine.
So Kevin is looking for a direction from committee of the whole to proceed with the color and guarantee that it's going to be purchased, I guess, is what you're saying?
That's all I'm saying is, is that it's moved forward in production timing because of just delivery. Normally, we are a year out from ordering. It's anywhere from 11 to 13 months. But in this, exactly what Mike's referring to is that normally, we are that far out. But now it's because of what's happening, it wouldn't be available, and we could see it as soon as the next two months. But if it's not going to be approved by council, I'd like to cancel that order today. Am I recommending canceling? Absolutely not, because we need it, and we have a sponsor that has committed to it for the next five years. I think we're in great shape. It's just, if there is an issue, I'd like to know it today.
I don't, I don't think there's an issue there in the sense that it doesn't affect the bottom line of the budget one cent, because it's in the rolling stock reserve that we see in front of us. So it's not, it's not a budget item that's going to affect the bottom line of the tax bill. Counselor Heinz?
I can't see taking that when we're in that situation. So I think, and especially when we have a sponsor, and there is that $5 an hour that is going to the reserve. I mean, when you add up the number of hours, it's a substantial amount. That's what you said, you know, you put 500, it's something way beyond that.
Yep, yep.
I think that we should, in light of that, we should just continue, leave it in here and know that we're leaving it in here.
I'll bring a full report back to council, you know, as we do with all capital expenditures. I just wanted, it was sort of a situation where if it's not, if it's a risk of changing, then I wanted to advise them anyway, but if there's no risk of changing, as counselors have mentioned here, then I'll proceed and I'll bring a report to council at the next council meeting to have it approved.
So let's say that you do go ahead and order it, and they do tell you that they're shipping in two months. Do you have the ability to have them ship it when it's convenient for you? Okay.
And I'll be honest, the number that we were receiving on a, on a trade-in, we have been able to have them increase that number, because they are in short supply of trade-ins right now. So we were able to get a bit more money out of that in trade-in. They want to make the transaction as soon as possible, because I think they want our trade more than, you know. So it's, I think we're in a good situation because of the situation that has occurred. When every other piece of equipment coming off the line is normally going overseas, and it's not now, it's a good situation for us in Ontario when manufacturing is happening in Ontario, so.
And how old is that?
2014.
Okay.
And it's due to be replaced every eight years. And we did get an eight-year commitment from Tim Hortons that has expired. And when I spoke with Mr. Cardy, they're in corporate. Sponsorship packages can extend past five, so that's why I stated that it's a five-year commitment. But Mr. Cardy has assured me that, you know, they've been on board for the last eight, and they've committed to the next five. He does not see it changing in five again, and it is, you know, it is, theoretically, it's paying the bill for that piece of equipment. So it's no different than the Fireman Association sponsoring the other one. So we're in a very good situation with the sponsorship paying for the, for the piece of equipment. It's a good position to be in.
And the trade-in may be a little bit more than you're suggesting?
The trade-in is definitely more, and I don't want to quote it right now. But I believe it went from 23 to 29, but I don't have that exact number, so I don't want to advise. But I do have it in an email that I can get that number to Jennifer. It's just, I told them, when they had said that we can possibly get the equipment earlier, I said, well, then my trade-in's worth more if I'm going to get something six months earlier. So we did some haggling back and forth. Got a loyalty credit of $3,000 plus, I believe, $6,000 in extra credit, so it was good.
Okay, any other questions on Schedule B? Nope? All right. All righty, then we will go into Schedule C. So Schedule C is all your facilities, and there's a little bit more bigger numbers in this one. So Schedule C has the town hall renovations of 1.1 million. That's a rebudget. And maybe I'll go through all the items, and then I'll just let the senior managers speak to any particular item if they wish. Generator for this building, $76,500. An office window for the environmental engineering office of $11,000. And then Madaway, it is broken down into three categories, but in total, that's the budget that you seen last year, I believe, in September, less what had been spent in 2022 and the balance remaining, plus the addition of the tennis courts. Garage feasibility study, that was started last year, so it's ongoing. And then the land purchase, design, and construction of the new garage. So that's over a three-year period. So 2.5 mil, 4.2, and 1.1. Roof replacement at the fire hall. Building renovations at the library of 2.9 million. Roof and windows and doors at the museum of $45,000 and $60,000. And landfill building upgrade of $37,000. So total, oh, I got a couple more, sorry, I think, yeah. Low square improvements, that's at the front here, of $290,000. O'Brien Park fencing, $75,000. Splash pad, and that's just a completion, of $88,000. Caboose of $5,000. Millennium trail lights of $32.5. I'll let Kevin speak to that. You'll note that that's a reduction in budget. So for a total of $28,000, 28.1, sorry, million to be spent in 2022. The forms to, the form of financing to pay for those items, you'll see a little bit more detail in the schedule as well as in the next schedule, because there's multiple ways to finance some of these larger projects. So for Madaway, we've got monies coming from the second ice pad, recreation major capital reserve, outdoor rink reserve, the provincial federal grant dollars of $11.8 million. Some funds coming from development fees, some coming from unallocated. And then the residual of that will be the debenture, and you'll see that a little bit lower. Town hall renovations, we have been successful in getting a grant for the accessibility, so that's the ramp at the front of $88,000. Splash pad, funding coming from the Rotary Club of $75,000. The Recreation Fundraising Committee of $25,000, and facility reserves of $56,000. Library rentals, there's a federal grant of 2 point, almost 2.3 million. A little bit of funds coming from development charges, $53,700. And then you'll see just reserves in general, and that's coming from various, for various items. So the garage study, low square, town hall. Why am I not going down here? Here we go. Windows generator, and you'll see, see how they're all listed this particular? So you'll see grouping on some of the larger items, because there's multiple sources of financing. And then when you get down to some of the smaller items, you're just going to see one line item. And you'll see the word facility, because the majority of those items are being financed from the facility reserves?
When it comes to low square, is there a concept of that? I understood it was just kind of a, an idea, a concept. We haven't seen anything on that.
Well, as I understand it right now, it's kind of a placeholder, but it's not a, there's nothing, I've seen that's 100%.
We do have a design that was completed, actually, I think we have two designs, but they're, we do have... they're head, they're, we do have two designs and costings, that's where we received the money, but nothing's been approved or nothing moving forward, but we do have it as a placeholder. We did secure the money as, as stated by Jennifer for the ramp for accessibility. The, I don't, there's, I know there's a, a couple of members of council are aware with the renovations to the former OPP area. We are in discussions and continue to discuss with Kendra Moffat from Infrastructure Ontario. They're close to making a decision. They've only been with it at least for four months now. But they're looking to do virtual, virtual court groups, looking to set up three virtual areas that they will be able to house the, the people attending, plus be virtual. And the town through Police Services Board has secured a, I'm going to lie, Kim, one point one million dollar grant?
I think that's about, that's pretty accurate.
Yes, but one point one or thereabouts.
So they have expressed interest in co-inhabiting with the courts on the main floor. And they're looking at a three-year commitment of forty thousand dollars annually towards the project. So those numbers are not in here, because we just were advised of those last Thursday. And I'm still hoping that now with the police interested in co-inhabiting, that Don Ferguson, Inspector Ferguson, will be able to push Infrastructure Ontario to make a decision and have those renovations done collectively. The Police Services Board grant is for the mental health side and be able to walk in and have walk-in communication. There will be an officer on duty at all times, plus an admin person, plus a councillor. So I've met with all of those people a couple of times last Thursday and the Thursday before. They're going to present something in writing to me to present to council, and they would like to proceed. They have to have by the end of April, secure an area, and they need to be occupying it by the end of August. So we will have a few months to make a decision and move forward with those required renovations. But the space that they need, plus the space that information, Infrastructure Ontario has advised me that they will require for the OPP, or the courts, it's going to work out quite nicely. So it's just getting the two people talking, which I think what the call that Inspector Ferguson will have, I think it'll come together, because it's been a struggle. I've been meeting with them twice a month since last October. They just can't pull the trigger, and now with the election coming, you know, there's more challenges and, and it's been frustrating. I have been diligent in keeping every email, train, or what do you call it, string emails, because it's just one excuse after another excuse after another excuse. And I've been blaming the mayor, stating that I'm getting extreme pressure from, from the mayor to, to get an answer, and I've been in communication with Don about it, and it's, it's, it's a struggle dealing with this level of government. But I think now we may with, with what's happening. So I'll keep you informed when I receive the letter from the Police Services Board on occupying that space, and we'll move forward at that point with a recommendation, with or without the courts. We'll move forward to, to have that worked out. Because we do have to fix the roof, it is leaking quite badly in the, I call it Sally Porter garage area. So we do have to move forward and get the roof and the air handler on the roof replaced, because it's been out of commission now for a year and a half because of a cracked heat exchanger. And we will be making a recommendation to vote to tender on a few of those items that will spend part of that one point one million that's been allocated there.
So just a clarification on that. It is the community outreach program that they've been allowed to, to move forward with, with that grant that we've been moving on. And you said by the end of April isn't the end of May, but they have to sign?
End of April, they have to commit to a spot.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, but they don't have to occupy it till, they just have to advise the grant people, I believe, that they've secured.
That they've got something.
Yeah. And they're putting it in writing to me, I was told by today, so that I can bring it forward to the next council meeting to say that we have a three-year tenant, we have to do some slight renovations. What they're hoping to do is take the two washrooms, change rooms areas, because they're not supporting walls, they want to take those, that area there and open, turn it into one large boardroom, meeting room, and then they need two off. So it's not a lot what they're asking for, and it's work that our staff can do.
And basically, that's what was long time ago, as a boardroom. But, so I'm well aware of that program and what's going on there, sitting on Police Services Board, and we have discussed it at budget. My original question was in regard to low square, seeing the design and knowing what was going on there at two hundred and ninety thousand, and where we're going to support that with, other than from, I guess, with the reserves?
I think that's, when we get to the summary, I think that might be one of the items left unfinanced. So when we get, so all these unfinanced amounts on each schedule, we noted at the bottom of the summary page, which we're get, we're going to come up to shortly.
Yes, just, just adding on to the low square, I know when we did the downtown renovation, we, we sort of looked at railway avenue and, and we depressed the curbs such that low square could kind of run out into railway avenue to, to sort of form part of a, a park. Now, there's lots of opportunities in low square to kind of make it kind of an event-friendly kind of space, where if you had a stage somewhere, you could put a stage up. But there's a lot of trees, there's pathways, there's gardens, there's a senate app in there. So the, the design of low square presents like a tremendous opportunity to do something that's, that's really good for a downtown, small community event, but the design has to be really carefully thought out. I, I think that two hundred and ninety thousand is, you know, if you, if you want to reconfigure it to get the best bang for the buck for the, for the community events and integrate the electrical and the, all the different pathways and the hard spaces and the, and the landscape areas, there, there is an opportunity there and probably should require a lot of input from council and the committees.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that as a council discussion, so.
For sure.
Maybe you guys that were here the last time are already aware of that, and I'm not. This is, I mean, I've heard of it, but not ever seen the design and it's kind of in the background, but I do understand that some came for a, when it was written down.
Just a further comment on courts. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm right, is they're still paying their annual rent, even though we don't have a signed lease right now?
Exactly. And I've been in contact with an individual who is going to provide us with a, a lease extension, there's a proper word, and I can't remember what and when they were using, but they have not occupied the building one day in, how long, Kim?
I think it's essentially since March of twenty twenty, so.
And they are paying and will continue to pay. And as of fourteenth of May, it was supposed to be the fourteenth of April, as of the fourteenth of May, they will be returning. I just heard from CBRE yesterday. And they have, they will be paying our staff to do one extra cleaning per day as they occupy the space. So they are returning, I've been told, on May the fourteenth, and they have secured us to do additional cleaning for them on a daily basis. But they continue to pay and everything's still fine, it's just, I was given pretty clear directions from the committee to have the transfer made and done as soon as possible, but it's been a uphill battle.
Okay. So where were we? So I, I'm not going to read out every single item that's being financed from facilities, you can see those values there. One thing that I did change from previous years was I added the internal debt payment. So you still have internal debt payment on this salt sand shed, which is almost complete, Madoway roof, and the LED lights. This is actually the second year of, of payment on the LED lights. So you have a balance remaining unfinanced the end of twenty twenty-two of thirteen point five million. And your reserve balance is twelve thousand dollars. So that's a bit, a bit of a red, a red flag. Keeping in mind, though, that a good portion of two of those items are going to be debentured. So if you go down just a little bit further, you'll see what the plan is. So I called it unfinanced payment schedule, projects payment schedule. And you'll note that the unfinanced amount is kind of highlighted in, in a bit of pink. And then you'll see your total annual debt charges are highlighted in pink. So what that is telling you is, those two numbers should be the same. If they're not, you have a problem. You don't have a plan to pay for your unfinanced. And that tells you what you have left to pay in each year for the next ten years. So it's a running balance.
Jennifer, within interest, interest rates kind of rising up, is there any opportunities to kind of lock debentures in earlier before the rates get too high?
Um, I didn't go there, but in most of my projections, I've added a half a percent, anything that was going to happen this year. Anything that's happening next year, I added one to one and a quarter percent. So looking at what's happening right now, I think you're going to be fairly close, but your debenture numbers, you're absolutely right, are going to change upon the time of debenture. It is something worth discussing with. I'm, I use Infrastructure Ontario debenture schedules, that's not necessarily where you have to go to, but that would be my recommendation, and those are the interest rates I'm using that they have provided to me. A few items to note for Madoway, you'll see that there's a bit of a yellow highlight there, requires additional transfer to facility reserves. So when I looked at that particular debenture, the forecast was an amortized debenture. If you go with a serial debenture, you're, have the potential to save close to half a million dollars on interest charges. But when you do that, it increases your upfront payments for your first ten years. So next year, when that decision is, is made, well, the end of this year, beginning of next year, once the debentures entered into, you'll have to look at how you're going to finance that debenture payment. So my recommendation is to, you'll be looking at some growth issues, you'll be looking at some budgetary issues, is to transfer additional funds into facility reserves and just let it go through the normal process, ma- make it nice and clean, streamlined. It's where you're going to get those funds to increase that transfer to facility reserves. So I've highlighted that in yellow, I don't, that, want to make sure that's not forgotten. The other two items, the library renovation, there's been no discussion on the debenture payment for the balance of the library renovation. So the net of the almost three million dollar project would be five hundred and eighty-six thousand, so that would require a debenture, given there's not sufficient funds and facility reserves to fund that. I know there's been discussion at the board level for fundraising, I did see that in the minutes, I think it was last month or the previous month. I'm not sure the status of that, I don't know if Kelly wants to speak to that, or...
So this is all kind of new, and because I don't think there was a lot of room in any, like, reserves set up for the library over the past, whatever, years, we're looking right now at, I've been in talks with other people in the province, looking at how to set up sponsorships and that type of thing for the remainder of the money. It's something that we're still, I still have to bring to the board next month to have them pass policies in regards to sponsorship, because we're sort of limited in what we can do as far as fundraising and being a designated charity, being a designated not-for-profit. So I'm still kind of trying to go through all of that to figure out what to bring, once the board passes it, then I will bring it to council for, for further discussion.
So once that grant is approved, you haven't heard anything at this point, Kelly?
Uh, no, we know they're still reviewing it, but that's as far as, that's all we know so far.
So once that grant's approved, that, that should come back to the council table for discussion as to how to fund those debenture payments? Because there will be that residual five hundred and eighty-six thousand left to fund. So that could be a this year decision, like late fall, or it could be a budgetary discussion through twenty twenty-three budget deliberations. And then the Madoway expansion too. Now, I know it's out there on the radar, but there's, there's only thirty-five hundred dollars annually for, for phase two of Madoway, so that's just, I wanted to make sure that's on the radar, I highlighted it in yellow, and that should be further discussions going forward, starting in twenty twenty-three budget deliberations. And then the note on the bottom is just, if, if you go ahead with all of those debentured items, in twenty twenty-three, you're going to have a budget impact of point four percent, so not a huge budget impact. In twenty twenty-four, point one, but in twenty twenty-five, there's a bit of a jump, four point one. And what's happening is, that's when those multiple-year projects come to completion and you enter into those final debentures. So when you get into, to twenty twenty-five, you're looking at a substantial levy increase of, of four point one percent. A lot of things will change from now to then, so again, this is another reserve area that I, I recommend additional funds as there's potential for growth going forward in the town, whether it be commercial buildings or subdivisions or, or what it is, to maybe take a portion of that and, and transfer some additional funds into this particular reserve as well as rolling stock. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one.
Sure.
So when I look at this, I see that there's five thousand dollars for the caboose. So I'm assuming, Kevin, that you did receive insurance certificates from the volunteers who want to do some work on that caboose?
No, all I have done is I've altered the budget to reflect Counselor Hines's report that was presented last July or August, is that correct?
Oh, in July.
Yeah, so all I've done is altered the, the, the budget to reflect the report that was presented by Counselor Hines, is all I've done. Nothing, to my knowledge, has, has moved forward on that, so.
No, not at this point, we're just working on a schedule so that we can bring in the schedule and the insurance at the same time, because we have to have a certain amount of days that are going to be good, and that won't happen probably till the end of May.
Okay.
We have spent no money out of, things have been done, but no money has been spent out of the municipal budget, other than we did a assessment of the lead paint and so did the recreation department. So the recreation department amount was out of the municipal funds. The amount that the committee did was out of our own personal funds. So that's for that side.
So my question would be, why do we have a, why do we have a line item on here whenever it was clearly stated that we weren't spending any money on the caboose? The town of Renfrew was spending no money on the caboose. We were offered five thousand dollars to get rid of the caboose. We did put a stay of execution, if you will, on, on that last, last year, last spring. Here we are in spring of twenty-two and nothing's been done to the, to the caboose. And it seems like we're not getting anything done anytime soon. So why do we have a five thousand dollar expenditure here? I know it's not a lot of money, but it's sort of the principle of the thing that we've decided not to spend.
Well, the thing is, at some point, you're going to have to start maintaining what's out there, whether it's the, it's, it didn't do it for ten years, and that's why we're in the situation we're in. And we did put five thousand dollars in the budget so that we could, Kim, I don't know if you want to address that any further about us putting that amount in there. We're doing, going to do some fundraising, we already have received some funds, as I've reported to you. And it's a matter of getting a schedule that we can have, so you can't do it when it's snowing one day and raining the next.
I understand.
And as soon as we can get that clear time to do that, then it will, the, the tarping and whatever they have to do will be put down, and it will take almost two weeks to do that, and then it would be painted after that, two weeks.
But before any of that can happen?
The paint, or?
But before any of that can happen, before any of that can happen, you need to provide proof of insurance for the lead paint. So before you lay tarps and think about the weather and all that, the town of Renfrew needs to have some sort of exoneration for responsibility.
That's the two things that need to go to the clerk's office in order to proceed with them.
Right.
And that's forthcoming, as I said before.
But the bottom, the bottom line is that we had already agreed more than a year ago that we weren't spending any money on this caboose, that we were, we were basically, we had an offer to sell the caboose. The buyer was taking it off its rails, was taking the rails, and it was cleaned up, done, and we were getting money in the bank. Now we've got a we've still got a budgetary expenditure now. You know, I mean, it
Take it out then.
Yeah, well, that's, it should be, it should not be there because Well, I know it's pittance, but it's, but at the same time
I understood that none of these things here affect the budget.
Well.
That doesn't affect the operating, like the the levy increase, because it's being funded from facilities reserve?
Yeah.
Correct? That's right.
It's still taxpayers' money. We are the purveyors, as you've said many times, we are the purveyors of the taxpayers' dollars and
We're also the purveyors of the, looking after the facilities and things that we have. And when you don't do that for 10 years, you get the result of what what's happened. And just because you don't like it, as a councillor, you have to look at the whole picture and look after the things that we have.
Well, I'm not the only one.
Okay, well, that's your opinion and
Many of us feel the same way.
Councillors have other opinions. So anyway, I will try and get something faster to you, but it's going to the clerk's office is what's happening.
Yep.
The insurance will go there and apply, and then I will share that with you.
Okay.
I don't understand why the insurance can't be forwarded ahead to the clerk's office with the rest of it.
Until you're doing the the job. They aren't going to pay for it for months on end until the job can be set up. That's what's happening.
You have to provide proof of insurance.
Yes, exactly. That hasn't gone away.
I, I, yeah. I think that's going to be your biggest
If it suits you. We haven't used a cent with that.
No, I know you haven't.
We've used the the funds that provide, that were provided by various businesses.
Right, I understand that. I know you've got your Save the Caboose Committee and that sort of thing, but I guess it's the $5,000 is is important, that it's not, that we don't spend any money, but most most important is that we move forward on this, that we either get an insurance policy in place, and then you start your work if in fact it meets the criteria that we
I understand that. And the insurance is not on the volunteers. It's on, it comes from the company that will be doing
Right, but, yeah, okay, I understand that. But as we sit here now at the end of April, you can hear it rusting out there, and nothing has been done, and everything is quiet. Nobody has said anything until right now.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't
Ask me.
I guess unless there's, we're dealing with a budget impact, we can, can we take this discussion to perhaps council or future meeting? Unless he's want to remove it from the budget. I think we want to concentrate on on the budget itself today, and and we have a lot of stuff to work through.
I'm just fine if you take it out, if you have no, if you relieve yourself of the responsibility of looking after it, then I'm fine. But we haven't used any money out of that, nor have we come to council, but we did come to council and ask you for that.
Carry on, Jennifer.
Okay. So unless there's any other questions on facility reserves, I've noted all the the issues that you need to be aware of for the future and onwards and forth, right?
So I guess the, I guess the key things are that, you know, looking forward, there's, we've clearly heard from Jennifer that, you know, council may need to or want to look at, or it's recommended, they look at additional funds towards rolling stock and facilities reserves. You do see some of the, what we'll call the pinch points look going forward as far as reserve balances and some impacts, especially on the facilities, on incremental impacts on operating, you know, should things go as 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 budgeted as forecasted, so. And it's it's good that there is some, I guess, some accommodation for some increase in interest rates, and hopefully, you know, that is sufficient enough and, you know, of where where things are heading. But there is a lot of unknowns, as there always is, and but I think it's a, it's certainly, it paints a good picture of where we at, where we're at right now with these, with these current capital schedules.
Okay, well, the next schedule is the roads infrastructure. I'm just going to make it a little bit smaller. It's a little bit more meaty. There's a lot of well, it's just, it's just a more heavy weighted area of your tangible capital assets for the municipality. So of course, you're going to have bigger dollar values and bigger projects. So you'll see in 2022, there are some deficiency issues still being addressed with the downtown core. That is an estimated dollar value. I think I might let Mike speak to that one.
Yeah, sure. So in the downtown construction project, there was a few claims that arose out of the closure that contract with cracking sidewalks and landscaping issues. Towns currently in has gone through mediation process, so we're just kind of waiting for that to to finalize. So so we know there's going to be likely some funds to either settle, or if mediation is unsuccessful, then then council will have to decide if they if they go further into litigation, which is what we're trying to avoid. You know, certainly, we would like to close out the project and everybody move ahead. And I think we're getting very close and well within the terms of the the funds that are set here. And actually, it'd be less funds for the town than than what's presented here. So that's good. Think on all the other construction projects, there are no outstanding claims for for projects that are completed. So I think we're we just have the one project that we have to deal with there.
Good. Stewart Street is is pretty much completed. We did leave a small amount because there's always that one little thing you forget. Hopefully, we don't spend that $25,000. But we thought it was important to have a small budget just in in case. County Road 52 Raglan Street, that's same thing, just finishing that project up. That's the balance of the budget. And hopefully, the the grants and all the paperwork will be completed fairly soon on those items. O'Brien Road, Gillan to Mask, so that is a two-year project. Started last year, a little bit of design work, grant application. I'll let Mike speak to that one.
Yeah, so that's a project that on April 19th, the tenders closed, and the the contract values are currently exceeding what the budget was. So we're evaluating with the engineers and the contractor and the MTO, how we're going to proceed with with that in reducing scope. There's an outside possibility, we might be recommending to kind of, you know, just re-tender those projects and try to extend timelines into 2023. I think the state of the contracting, you know, we had many interested bidders that were bidding, and only one bid submitted for that project, as well as the Jeffrey Haig Dufferin. So we're working through what the options are there. But I think the MTO has indicated on their contracts, they've seen exponential increases in costs. And and we're seeing the same thing here with these tenders that have closed. And somehow, we have to try to get the best value for money out of the money that we have. There's this particular project on on O'Brien Road from Gillan to Mask has $3 million in MTO funding attached to it. So so we we don't want to just cancel the project and and lose that funding, or we have to reapply in the future. But on the other hand, anything above 3 million, we have to pay for. So we want to make sure we're getting good value out of that, and we're meeting the requirements, the technical requirements of the road expansion. So we're still working that. That's going to be likely be brought to council maybe May 10th or in that timeframe.
Okay. So Jeffrey Haig Dufferin, Mike just spoke to those three streets as well, same position. Monroe and Harry. And this is, is that in application right now still?
No, that that project is essentially, we've applied under the Green Stream fundings in the past, and we're not successful. So this is to advance the design work on our own, using municipal tax dollars.
And then, and then the project will be completed in the following year. Arca Lock Hill Opiongo, and that's another Green Stream application. So groundwork this year, work done next year?
Yes. So from a, from a perspective, the the province and the feds have basically nominated that project to to advance. So you'll be hearing more about that project. Essentially, it's a a water main replacement project for Arga Lock Hill, part of Opiongo and part of Hall Avenue from the intersection of Ragland Street South and Bar Street. So so the the project would include funding to replace the water main, and the town on would would basically look at the remainder of the roadwork and the sidewalks and the boulevards to kind of, you know, make sure that after the project's finished, those roads would be rehabilitated to some extent.
So that would include the $100,000 for the Dominion Enlin? Is that part of that same project? That's a separate project?
Yes.
So that's a design work as well, $100,000, and work to be completed next year? H Street, design only, $50,000. O'Brien Road, Mask to Wrangler, and that's design work again?
Yes, and we have been advised just last week that we were not successful on O'Brien Road from from Mask to Wrangler. So that project can be removed from from the budget.
So the design work part?
The design work part is not going to be funded by MTO, yeah.
So we do have a a two-year gap, and then we were hoping it to be ready for 2025.
So I would push that, push that out a year. It's probably a reasonable, because we'll have to reapply for the design. And then if we're successful in the design, then we reapply in a future year for the for the capital funding.
You think one year is sufficient to push out, or?
I think so at this stage, yeah. If we push each of the design and the construction out by a year.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll move it to next year, yeah. I'll, and I'll index that construction number, or did you want to recalculate that for me? Sure, yeah, I think that'd be better.
They're losing US dollars now.
Yeah. And why does it want to do that? It doesn't want to move right for me.
Jennifer, I can kind of summarize from the development of works perspective. There's a lot of design work being proposed in 2022 to kind of get ready for future construction projects. We've had lots of, you know, lots of concerns about the roads. The Development and Works Committee want to want to advance roadworks. They know it's needed in the community. There are some roads that are getting very, very poor condition. So we want to proceed with the design so that we can then, you know, tender them in a reasonable timeframe early to be able to get to construction in the following years. So so this budget would include a lot of design work that that would then produce all the drawings and specifications that you could get pricing out early and then work it into next year's budget.
So you you kind of beat me to the punchline, but I'll just jump ahead a little bit then. So if you go to page three of your Schedule D, you'll see a lot of boxes that are highlighted in green. And those are all for those particular projects that are going to be shovel-ready, get the design work done, anticipating future funding. That does not mean that these particular roads in the next 10 years are going to happen. It's all pending those funding dollars. So that's why I highlighted each one of those in green. So it looks great that all this work's going to get done in the next 10 years. But if those funding dollars aren't going to be received, then you have to go back back to your plan of attack, as well as the asset management plan. Update right now, that could change because some of those roads may be reprioritized. I'll let Mike speak now.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, one of the major funding sources that we've had for the last 10 years is the OSIF formula-based funding. So we've been receiving over $800,000 a year in formula-based funding to support road projects. So there's no commitment beyond, I think, 2022 for those funds. And I think that the province is now with their budget was just passed yesterday. I haven't heard the announcement. But but I think the municipalities have been pushing for a stable source of funding to support road projects. So the green boxes here would reflect that funding. If if that 800,000 was continued year by year, then it gives us a lot of capacity to kind of advance those construction projects. And we've got a lot of money. That's that's the big difference in the last, say, eight years compared to the, you know, 15 or 20 years ago, where we didn't have that stable source of funding for infrastructure projects. But but with the OSIF formula-based funding, we have, and we've been able to leverage those dollars with our dollars and development charges and water and wastewater funds to really do a lot of roadwork without hitting the tax base too hard.
So so further to what Mike said, if you go to page four, and you go to the, close to the bottom, where all the reserve balances are, you'll see that the OSIF fund at the end of each year, you'll see that it goes to zero, because we only know how far right now today, those are the only funds I put in. So I didn't want to put any future commitment in and allude to, you have all these dollars available for these roads when you, you don't. We're anticipating you will, but at the point of drafting this budget, you didn't have that commitment.
Yeah, and the other major funding source is the federal gas tax money that we've been receiving regularly. And in 2022, they actually doubled our federal gas tax. So they're giving us $1.5 million to do infrastructure work. So so that was a big bonus for 2022. So that's that's reflected in our budget.
You're stealing my thunder again. I was going to bring that one up too. So a good chunk of those funds were utilized to fund Stewart Street. And that avoided the municipality having to go into another debenture. So we saved, I think it was $265,000 on interest charges, future debenture interest charges on that particular road due to those surplus funds being received. So there is a small balance left to to fund on Stewart Street, and that's going to be out of the asset management plan reserve.
A lot less?
A lot less, yeah. So $265,000 savings on making that decision not to debenture. So I know we kind of jumped around a little bit, so I just want to go back and finish the the balance of the projects for 2022. And it was just on right close to the bottom of the other section. This does not want to move around for me nicely today. So we also have I'm going back to page one, because we kind of jumped around there a little bit. So we did Monroe, Harry, okay. Other, under other infrastructure, that's where we had ended, Storm Sewer Carswell Street. So I wanted to have a particular conversation about Carswell Street, and not necessarily Carswell Street, but Storm Sewer. So throughout your operating budget and your capital budget review, I noticed there's been a a lack of budgetary concentration or payroll tax burden, particularly for Storm Sewer activity. So it's it's an area that the municipality really needs to address. There's no capital reserves particular for Storm Sewer. There's very little dollars in the operating budget for Storm Sewer. And it is an aging infrastructure. You have probably some of that infrastructure upwards of 100 years old. Is that correct, Mike? Or? Yeah. And we do have one failing over on Carswell Street. It wasn't the operating budget. It does meet the definition of a capital asset. So we didn't move it from operating over to capital. Funding it, because it's not a huge dollar value, but funding it from roads reserves for 2022 to deal with the problem in this budget or to start addressing the problem. But again, it's another area that in 2023 and going forwards, if you have some growth opportunity, I would recommend you would start that particular reserve. And in, you know, those are a few areas that I have, and I'll speak a bit more to it when we get to the reserve schedule. But there really is an urgent need to have a formalized reserve policy for the municipality, to go and look at all your service levels in conjunction reserve policy for the municipality, to go and look at all your service levels in conjunction with your asset management plan, and make sure you're covering all the areas of your assets. You're never going to have enough reserves to replace them all, that's not the intent of reserves, but you should be on a fairly decent ten-year cycle. And, and I see a few shortfalls, and in some areas, you guys are doing great, but I've addressed rolling stock now, and facilities, and Storm Sewer. Okay, Mike wants to add to that?
Yeah, just on, on the Storm Sewer issue, it's, it's become a, a large concentration of the ministry and the province as far as addressing storm water. You've all heard about climate change, you've all heard that the rainstorms are becoming a lot more intense than they have been, and, and we've seen that, and even the areas, like if you can recall, the Old Gorman Street and Bank Street area that was flooding constantly every time it rained, that was kind of a function of that. We are seeing kind of higher storm events, a lot more loading to the, to the sanitary sewers, and, and a lot more to the storm sewers. And, and we're, we're constantly installing new storm sewers to separate the sanitary system from the storm. So, so we're getting, like, every time you separate the storm water from the sanitary, well, that builds capacity in your sewage plant to accommodate growth for the future, right? There's less water, less rainwater going down to the sewage plant to get treated, so it's very, very important. Many municipalities, City of Ottawa, they put a special tax in for every property to deal with storm water. So, you know, on top of the regular levies, they're adding a, a storm water levy. Peterborough did the same thing, many other municipalities are going, because it traditionally has been an underfunded kind of asset. If you think about the number of kilometers, we have about sixty-eight kilometers of roads, we probably have fifty kilometers of storm sewers. And when you compare the dollars that we spend on water and wastewater, and you compare the dollars we spend on storm, essentially, we're, we're not, we're not investing for renewal of that infrastructure at all, so. So it is a large risk that's building, and we have to kind of get on top. Our asset management plan will include storm water and the value of those assets and how much we should be putting towards operation and maintenance, but it's, it's going to be a lot higher than we're doing now, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have any number, like, can, do you have a sample number of what Ottawa puts in as a, like, as an added tax onto property that is specifically for storm sewers?
I don't know what they're, it's like probably two percent or something of their.
Okay, on every property, right?
On every property, every property being rural properties, urban properties, they're all required to contribute.
Hmm.
And it's, it's very, very politically unpopular, as you can imagine.
I bet.
Right? Because like, you know, people are saying, well, why do I have to pay to drain my property or degrade my property, right? But all that storm water now, on top of just the water getting into a storm sewer, now has to go somewhere into a pond, a storm pond, to be treated, and it's becoming almost like sewage treatment wasn't an issue before the nineteen sixties. A storm water right now is not an issue, but it's becoming an issue where now all new developments have to have storm water treatment systems, they have to put oil-water separators so that when that first flush falls on, you know, the rain falls on a parking lot, washes all the oil and grease into a catch basin, that that gets separated from the storm sewers prior to dumping it into the river. So all that technology is, is being developed, and the ministry's requiring it now, so the costs are increasing, and it's becoming much more of a visible area that money needs to be spent on.
So is that what is out beside the new Toyota dealership?
I'm not sure.
There's like a big pond out there.
Yeah, it could be.
Uh, no, I think that's for a dry hydrant for the fire department.
Oh, okay.
I believe.
Yeah, so, so if you look at the Hunter Gate subdivision, there's two ponds that are constructed in there, and they're very large ponds with.
Okay.
Pegwalls and structures and outlets and oil grease separators.
And that's what they are for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Collaring has a small pond that was built part of that development.
So did we pay for the one out at Hunter Gate, or did the developer?
So the developer pays for it and builds it, and then we inherit it, so we, we have to maintain it and, and fix it when it's, when it's broken.
Okay.
So that's what happens, similar to the roads, right? Like, the developers build all the roads, they put all the water mains in, sanitary sewers, the storm sewers, then they turn it over to us, and then we have to fix it from that point on.
Thank you.
And replace it whenever it needs to be replaced.
Yeah, just as a matter of interest, the one in Horton, George Jackson Toyota built that pond there, New North, there's a fire hydrant right there, and they purposely did that to accommodate the township for another source of water for, you know, in case of a fire.
Okay, now, so the sources of funding, and I'm not going to read them because we'd be here for a couple of days, you'll see what I've done is highlight each project with a bit of a pink header, and again, like Stewart Street, look at, and now that's 2021's actual, look at the different sources of funding. So you can have multiple fundings for each project. Most cases, there, there is a grant attached, which is, which is terrific, some cases, there's water and wastewater funding. The one, the waste and wastewater funding for the projected ones, we don't know if there's sufficient funds in the next ten years. We went ahead with assuming there would be pending grants, so again, I caution, don't take those future forecasted numbers to heart, they're forecasted numbers. That doesn't necessarily mean the funds are a hundred percent available. Mike wants to speak to that?
Yeah, and, and I think by, by looking at, say, the breakdown for Stewart Street, it, you know, becomes quite obvious that, that on those very expensive projects, like over five and a half million, there's not a lot of tax dollars that, that are going in there. There's a lot of provincial and federal and development charge money, and all those difficult decisions that council made to implement development charges, you know, is, is really helping support those projects without increasing taxes.
Yeah, that's a good point, and you'll see there on the Stewart Street, the federal gas tax, the one point three million, and that was going to be, I think it was eight hundred and ninety-five, so there's where we tapped into those additional funds, which is definitely a win for the municipality. Um, I just want to, I don't think there was anything super to highlight on any of the financing of those, I would recommend you read through them on your own. The balance of the remaining unfinanced at the end of '22 is almost two point nine million dollars.
Jennifer, can I ask a question?
Yep, sure.
It's on, um, maybe three, Schedule D?
Mm-hmm.
And it's just your, you know, with the issue of where we might have the money and power, how we're going to fund it, so down at Bar Street?
Yes.
We have RPG, is that, is there a?
That's the seventy thousand dollar dividend that you get annually, so that, it, that goes through, so it comes in as a revenue, gets transferred to miscellaneous reserve.
That's a suggestion I'm hoping.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's say in that particular year, maybe you didn't get the grant on that road, but you got it on another road, you can move that seventy thousand dollars over to a different road, yeah.
These are suggestions?
Suggestions, yeah. As we go forward on the reserve schedule, I would have more suggestions on tightening those numbers and trying to link them to your asset management plan going forward, okay? And we really want to stress that these are projected and not hard-fast numbers, because it could affect any applications you put forward. So if we, we adopt these schedules, and the province says, well, you're going to do them, no, they're just projected, we don't know if we're going to do them, we're hoping we're going to get these grant dollars, so.
It's a plan.
That's right, it's a plan, so we really want to stress that it's a plan, it's a projection, it doesn't mean the funds are there today. Yes, Mike?
I was just going to add, when we, we're going to be discussing very, very soon asset management plan, because we're updating the asset management plan, that's like super important, because the province, on every application, asks for our asset management plan. What we do is, the asset management plan identifies the needs that we have in the infrastructure, and usually that number's really high, and then we assess the ability of the municipality to pay for the infrastructure, which is not that high, and the gap is money that we present on our asset management plan, is we need, we need help from the provincial and federal government to help pay, because there's no way we can pay, pay to replace the infrastructure that we have. So that, that asset management plan is super important in, in sort of laying out the financial strategy to, to tell the province, we need more money to help do this work that's needed, so. So you'll see that in our asset management plan.
So, and my next comment just adds to what you had just said, Mike, the, about midway down on page four, you'll see a total of projects requiring minimum thirty percent grant to proceed. So I totaled all those green boxes, so you would know, in order for all of those projects to go ahead, that's the dollar value we're looking at. That's just in one year, so over a ten-year, ten-year timeframe, you're looking at six million dollars. So if you're not successful on grant applications, you have a six million dollar problem. However, if you look at the summary, I put a little bracket, I'm just going to move the cursor, see this number here? So that's the total of your, all your reserves at the end of ten years for roads, five point three million. So if you weren't successful, you don't have sufficient dollars to do all those projected projects. So that, that's, that's what's called your funding gap, and that's what the province is looking for every time you apply. So some of these policies that I'm referring to, they're, they are required in regulation, they need to be incorporated, and the province is going to start asking for that when you apply for each one of these jobs, further than the particular questions on the asset management plan. So you need to identify your funding gap, so we've done that here. And not every road that needs to be done in the ten, in the next ten years, based on the life cycle. Mike and I took a look at it, because it is in the middle of an update year, of updating the asset management plan, there could be another five million dollars worth of, of roads in there that need to be done in ten years that we haven't identified, we just picked the top, well, actually, I still have three or four roads that I didn't even put in here, that you did give me. So there is a lot of work to be done in the next ten years, so again, I'm painting a picture to the committee, to council, that if you don't get those funding dollars, you don't have sufficient funds to do, the roads already identified here, let alone adding anymore.
You likely have to add money in for springs on the fire truck as you're going down.
Yeah, and inflation, and, what do you, what was the number you used, thirty-five percent? Yeah. So it's not, it's not a bad news picture, you do have substantial reserves, but again, I think you're falling just a, a little bit short over a ten-year period, so when you get your asset management plan updated, you get, you look at your reserve policy, your target is, can I have, do I have the capability with a potential thirty percent funding model from the province, give or take, to do these projects over a ten-year period? Right now, you don't, you're close, but you don't. So again, another bit of a shortfall. And, and it's not one particular reserve, you'll see that I've summarized, there's multiple reserves that use for roads, you've got your AMP one, two, three, and four, your parking lot reserve, shave and pave roads, Millennium Trail, your OSIF, and your gas tax money, which is now called Community Building Fund, so we'll have to get used to changing that acronym, I guess.
Have you analyzed what the total impact of these asset management plan levies have been, like, without those municipalities?
Uh, with, without the AMP?
Yeah.
Uh, without the AMP, you wouldn't be doing very much at all, that was, it was a good decision to do that. I think when you look at the reserve policy, and I was, I was going to address that when we get to that schedule, you should really take a hard look at that AMP, the majority of the monies have been directed to roads and infrastructure, and maybe over a ten-year period, maybe there needs to be a reallocation. And I think once you hit that ten-year mark on your AMP, what are you, I can't remember what year you're at, year three, year four, on starting it?
Probably.
Little more than that. I would say, once you get to your ten-year, I would probably eliminate that, calling it AMP one, two, three, and four, and redistribute those dollars into the particular reserves that you need them in. So I think when you write and look at your reserve policy, so your new treasurer, they've got a little bit of, of homework to do, and I, I think you'll get there, I think adding the point two five percent is a good start, I think you're probably looking, depending on your growth, at a point five, maybe, to, to get there over a ten-year period. But it's a good start.
And we, we're, we're through that last capital schedule now.
Yeah, I just have to do the summary one, but we can do that after lunch, that's fine.
Yeah, maybe it's a good point to, to break right now, then. Victoria, can we pause, I guess we're going to have to start up a new, a new meeting, or?
No, it'll just.
Pause?
I'll switch the screen, the music will blow up, so we'll be back in a minute, just like a closed meeting.
All right, so for those who may be viewing or viewing later, we are going on a, a bit of a lunch recess, and we'll resume probably within the hour. Thank you.
Yes, this is on Netflix?
Yes, this is on Netflix?
Okay, we're back. So we'll call this part two and we'll get right into it. So I'll turn it back to you, Jennifer.
Okay, so we've covered the four capital schedules. So this schedule is just a summary of what we reviewed this morning. So the first line is the total expenditures for 2022. So Schedule A, equipment, 822,000. Schedule B, 689,000. Schedule C, 28.1 million. Schedule D, 5.7 million. So our total capital expenditures for 2022 is $35,317 and change. Sources of funding for those projects are 5 million, 70,000 coming from Capital Reserve, 581,000 coming from Unallocated Reserve, internal debt, 225,000 and change. Development charges, 326. Trade-in value, 27,000. Federal Provincial Grants, 16.1 million. Donations and fundraising, 240,000. So we have a total source of funding of 25 almost .6 million dollars. So that leaves unfinanced at the end of 2022 of 17 million dollars. So if I carry forward the unfinance from each schedule, I should come up with the same dollar value, which I did. That means the balance is yay, 17 million dollars. So you should always be cognizant of this is what's unfinanced over and above the debentures that you currently have. So you currently have a water and a wastewater debenture. And what else? Can't even think of them all off the top of my head. Those are your two big ones. So the 17 million dollars, how are we going to address funding that? Well, you've got your equipment items. So what's going to be left unfinanced is the radio system upgrade, 70,000. Bodyworks. So these aren't necessarily the total value. They can be part values. I should just note that. Bodyworks equipment, 150,000. Gymnastics, 20,000. Sound system, 30,000, 870. Ball Diamonds Fields, 100,000. So that's what's going to be left unfinanced. But if you recall, then we're going to grab some more of that reserve in the following year. So that those numbers go up and down. Out of rolling stock, we'll be leaving 68,200 of the ice surface are unfinanced and the tandem 194,415. Schedule C, facilities, Madoe Way Roof, 253,119, still is unfinanced. Annual payments, 35,911. Town Hall renovations will be leaving unfinanced. Annual payment, 75,000. LED lights, unfinanced, 500,555. Annual payments include an interest. That one has interest, 68,408. New debenturing for Madoe Way, almost 9 million dollars. So you'll see here, I've got the note. It's 25-year serial debenture at 3.43. These are estimates. We don't know what the interest rate is going to be. And maybe that's going to be a 30-year debenture. We don't know until the project's done. That'll have to come back to the council table. But that's a projection. For the garage, 2.7 million, 25-year serial debenture, 3.97. You'll see I used a bit of a higher rate because it's going to be completed at a later term than the Madoe Way expansion. So I'm anticipating another half a percent interest increase. Keeping in mind the interest rates that were given to me by Infrastructure Ontario were staggered. What they're going to be at six months, 12 months, one year, three year, five year. So I played with those and added a quarter percent, half a percent, 1% depending on when the project was going to be completed. So those are all crystal ball percents, okay? Library renovations, I'm estimating a 20-year serial debenture at 3.47. Now again, Kelly spoke to it. Depends on what she finds out on fundraising and whatnot. So that will change as information comes forward. Highway 60 debenture, you pay 123,185. That's already coming out of AMP 1. You still have remaining on that 1.8 million. Argyle Lockhill Hall Water Replacement Program, 25-year serial debenture, 3.93. So the annual payment on that would be 128,699 for 693. So you'll see that that number, 17 million and change, I go back up to the top here, balance two. You know, you're at a few dollars, but you're going to have some rounding here and there essentially. So that's how you're going to pay for all that unfinanced. So from the 2022 debt financing summary, that half a page, that's the information that was never put in one spot. I think council always knew and always was told where it was in pieces, but now it's all in one spot. So you know exactly. The decisions you've made today have a cost of 17 million dollars, a net cost after funding. So I'm just going to let you absorb that for a minute and throw it out to questions. Mike?
Just a question on the 70,000 dollars for the radio system upgrade. That's funds like we're currently using our existing radio system, but it's at the end of its life and could fail at any moment, right?
That's correct.
So we're basically budgeting 70,000 dollars. Would that be better put in a reserve fund? Like take the 70,000, put it in a reserve fund so we don't have to sort of tax for it?
You're not taxing for it because it's coming out of the equipment reserve. If you were taxing for it, I would agree with you 100%.
Yeah, so it's not impacting.
It's not impacting the bottom line.
Okay, that's good. Thanks.
And I know there's been lots of discussion at the county level regarding the whole radio system for the fire department as well. And it's kind of up in the air. And that's a real crystal ball until I think we get to completely digital communications. And who knows when we're going to get there?
And the technology is changing all the time. So a solution in three years from now may be totally different than.
It could be 700,000 dollars. Who knows?
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on that summary? Okay. Reserves is the next schedule. I'll make this a little bit bigger. So a couple of things I want to note on this. This schedule used to be in two and all I did was capitals at the top, operating's at the bottom. I just merged it to make one schedule. So kind of one-stop shopping. You'll note that all the items highlighted in that pinky red color, those are reserves that are not indexed. So they do not go up by 2% annually. That is a past pattern. I kept the pattern. Again, when you look at your reserve drafting, the reserve policy, your new treasure, there could be areas that you may want to start indexing. One of them was, I think it's Madoe Way Component was one. If I go, yeah, I would be indexing that one. When you look at the cost to replace some of the items, just even the chiller at Madoe Way, I know that we are looking at a new building, but even a new building, a lot of stuff only has a lifecycle of eight to 10 years, some of the equipment items. So I'm a little concerned there. We know there's sufficient monies for boards and the glass, but that is one area that I'd be indexing. I wouldn't necessarily be saying it should be 70,000, but I would at least index it because you're not marrying up with inflation by any means. The other item that is not indexed is, I thought there was one more. Election. Election, Kim and I took a look at. We did increase it by 500. I think that's okay. But again, I'd be looking at that every couple of years or at least after each election when you look at actual costs. Landfill closure is not indexed. Mike and I chit-chatted about this a little bit. Thought we'd leave it for the reserve policy, maybe look at the annual report, see where we are on foreclosure costs and take a look at that and write it in as part of the reserve policy. I think those, yeah, those are the only three items that aren't indexed. Important to note that the 2021 ending balance, those are where we were at at the time I printed this. Those numbers are changing daily as we do year-end files. So two months from now, as a councillor, if you have a question on the reserve, please go back to the finance staff. Those numbers will change going forward. They're close, but they're not bang on. Some of them may be bang on because there may not be any adjustments in them, but they're fairly close. Top four is a policy decision that previous council made to add a 0.25% levy increase annually and create AMP reserves, being AMP 1, 2, 3, and 4. And the majority of those reserves are financing items such as the downtown debenture, Stewart Street, Hall Avenue Extension. Those are like some of the three major highlighted ones. You'll see as you go over, so that'll be on your second page, but I'm just going to, well, let's scroll over for me.
Jennifer, just, we had a bit of discussion the other day about like, you know, we're experiencing very high tender prices right now. There are limitations on like the OSIF funds as far as using them within a certain timeframe and the gas tax money. So, you know, I know there was a suggestion, which was not a bad one, that we kind of put things on pause construction-wise until maybe the market stabilizes. But that puts us in conflict with the deadlines that we have for spending some of these funds, right?
You may, with us using such a substantial amount of the gas tax for Stewart Street, you may get away for gas tax. You will not get away with it with OSIF. OSIF is already looking for where you're spending it, when you're spending it. They really have stringent timelines and they don't waiver from them. Gas tax, you got a bit more of a five-year window. So but you need both of them to do any major capital jobs. So you kind of have to spend it annually. What I wanted to point out on the AMP 1 and 2 is if you get to year 10,
Donations and fundraising, two hundred and forty thousand. So we have a total source of funding of twenty-five, almost point six million dollars. So that leaves unfinanced at the end of two thousand and twenty-two of seventeen million dollars. So if I carry forward the unfinance from each schedule, I should come up with the same dollar value, which I did. That means the balance is yay, seventeen million dollars. So you should always be cognizant of this is what's unfinanced over and above the debentures that you currently have. So you currently have a water and a wastewater debenture. And what else? Can't even think of them all off the top of my head. Those are your two big ones. So the seventeen million dollars, how are we going to address funding that? Well, you've got your equipment items. So what's going to be left unfinanced is the radio system upgrade, seventy thousand. Body works, so these aren't necessarily the total value. They can be part values. I should just note that. Body works equipment, one hundred and fifty thousand. Gymnastics, twenty thousand. Sound system, thirty thousand, eight seventy. Ball diamonds, fields, a hundred thousand. So that's what's going to be left unfinanced. But if you recall, then we're going to grab some more of that reserve in the following year. So that, those numbers go up and down. Out of rolling stock, we'll be leaving sixty-eight thousand, two hundred of the ice surface are unfinanced and the tandem, one hundred and ninety-four, four fifteen. Schedule C, facilities, Madoe Roof, two hundred and fifty-three, one nineteen, still is unfinanced. Annual payments, thirty-five, nine eleven. Town hall renovations will be leaving unfinanced. Annual payment, seventy-five thousand. LED lights, unfinanced, five hundred thousand, five fifty-five. Annual payments include an interest. That one has interest, sixty-eight thousand, four oh eight. New debenturing for Madoe, almost nine million dollars. So you'll see here, I've got the note. It's a twenty-five-year serial debenture at three point four three. These are estimates. We don't know what the interest rate is going to be. And maybe that's going to be a thirty-year debenture. We don't know until the project's done. That'll have to come back to the council table. But that's a projection. For the garage, two point seven million, twenty-five-year serial debenture, three point nine seven. You'll see I used a bit of a higher rate because it's going to be completed at a later term than the Madoe expansion. So I'm anticipating another half a percent interest increase. Keeping in mind the interest rates that were given to me by Infrastructure Ontario were staggered, what they're going to be at six months, twelve months, one year, three year, five year. So I played with those and added a quarter percent, half a percent, one percent, depending on when the project was going to be completed. So those are all crystal ball percents, okay? Library renovations, I'm estimating a twenty-year serial debenture at three point four seven. Now again, Kelly spoke to it. Depends on what she finds out on fundraising, whatnot. So that will change as information comes forward. Highway sixty debenture. You pay one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one eighty-five. That's already coming out of AMP one. You still have remaining on that, one point eight million. Argyle Lockhill Hall Water Replacement Program. Twenty-five-year serial debenture, three point nine three. So the annual payment on that would be one twenty-eight, six ninety-nine for six ninety-three. So you'll see that that number, seventeen million and change. I go back up to the top here. Balance two. You know, you're at a few dollars, but you're going to have some rounding here and there, essentially. So that's how you're going to pay for all that unfinanced. So the, from the two thousand and twenty-two debt financing summary, that half a page, that's the information that was never put in one spot. I think council always knew and always was told where it was in pieces, but now it's all in one spot. So you know exactly, the decisions you've made today have a cost of seventeen million dollars, a net cost after funding. So I'm just going to let you absorb that for a minute and throw it out to questions. Mike?
Just a question on the seventy thousand dollars for the radio system upgrade. That's, that's funds like we're currently using our existing radio system, but it's at the end of its life and, and could fail at any moment, right?
That's correct.
So, so we're basically budgeting seventy thousand dollars. Would that be better put in a reserve fund? Like take the seventy thousand, put it in a reserve fund so we don't have to sort of tax for it?
You're not taxing for it because it's coming out of the equipment reserve. If you were taxing for it, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah, so, so it's not impacting.
It's not impacting the bottom line.
Okay, that's good. Thanks.
And I know there's been lots of discussion at the county level regarding the whole radio system for the fire department as well. And it's kind of up in the air. And that's a real crystal ball until I think we get to completely digital communications. And who knows when we're going to get there.
And the technology is changing all the time. So a solution in three years from now may be totally different than.
It could be seven hundred thousand dollars. Who knows? Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on, on that summary? Okay. Reserves is the next schedule. I'll make this a little bit bigger. So a couple of things I want to note on this. This, this schedule used to be in two. And all I did was capitals at the top, operating's at the bottom. I just merged it to make one schedule. So kind of one-stop shopping. You'll note that all the items highlighted in that pinky red color, those are reserves that are not indexed. So they do not go up by two percent annually. That is a past pattern. I kept the pattern. Again, when you look at your reserve drafting the reserve policy, your new treasurer, there, there could be areas that you may want to start indexing. One of them was, I think it's Madoe Component was one. If I go, yeah. I would be indexing that one. When you look at the cost to replace some of the items, just even the, the chiller at Madoe, I, I know that we are looking at a new building, but even a new building, a lot of stuff only has lifecycle of, of eight to ten years, some of the equipment items. So I'm a little concerned there. We know there's sufficient monies for boards and the glass, but that is one area that I'd be indexing. I wouldn't necessarily be saying it should be seventy thousand, but I would at least index it because you're not, you're not marrying up with inflation by any means. The other item that is not indexed is, I thought there was one more. Election, election, Kim and I took a look at, we did increase it by five hundred dollars. I, I think that's okay. But again, I'd be looking at that every couple of years, or at least after each election, when you look at actual costs. Landfill closure is not indexed. Mike and I chit-chatted about this a little bit. Thought we'd leave it for the reserve policy. Maybe look at the annual report, see where we are on post-closure costs and take a look at that and, and write it in as part of the reserve policy. I think those, yeah, those are the only three items that aren't indexed. Important to note that the two thousand and twenty-one ending balance, those are where we were at, at the time I printed this. Those numbers are changing daily as we do year-end files. So two months from now, as a councillor, if you have a question on the reserve, please go back to the finance staff. Those numbers will change going forward. They're close, but they're not bang on. Some of them may be bang on because there may not be any adjustments in them, but they're, but they're fairly close. Top four is a policy decision that previous council made to add a point two-five percent levy increase annually and create AMP reserves, being AMP one, two, three, and four. And the majority of those reserves are financing items such as the downtown debenture, Stewart Street, Hall Avenue Extension. Those are like some of the three major highlighted ones. You'll see as you go over, so that'll be on your second page, but I'm just going to, well, let's scroll over for me. I'll have to go down too.
Jennifer, just, we, we had a bit of discussion the other day about like, you know, we're experiencing very high tender prices right now. There are limitations on like the OCF funds as far as using them within a certain timeframe and, and the gas tax money. So, you know, I know there was a suggestion, which was not a bad one, that we kind of put things on pause construction-wise until maybe the market stabilizes. But that puts us in conflict with the deadlines that we have for spending some of these funds, right?
You may, with us using such a substantial amount of the gas tax for Stewart Street, you may get away for gas tax. You will not get away with it with OCF. OCF is already looking for where you're spending it, when you're spending it. They really have stringent timelines and they don't waiver from them. Gas tax, you got a bit more of a five-year window. So, but you need both of them to do any major capital jobs. So you kind of have to spend it annually. What I wanted to point out on the AMP one and two is if you get to year ten, so that's the second page at the end. You'll see there's some substantial dollars in there. Those numbers are the same numbers that are on that Schedule D roads. So remember I pointed out, if you didn't get your six million dollar funding, you need the five million dollars in reserves. So those are, these are all the same numbers. Every number on this reserve schedule correlates back to Schedule A, B, C, and D. So I don't want you to be misguided by looking here going, oh, I have one point four million dollars at the end of ten years. Well, you do, but you won't if you don't get all that funding on Schedule D. So just make sure you, when you, if you're going back to any of your documents, look at all four schedules and your reserve schedule together. I know the reserve numbers are on your individual schedules, but I just don't want you to go backwards and go, there's some money, when there might not necessarily be money sitting there. So if, if you were successful in the funding, AMP one, two, and three, is, is it growing at a great rate? Yes, it is. Will you be adding a lot more roads to the tenure forecast going forward? Definitely. As you get funding, you'll be adding more and more roads. That, that's the positive. As you don't get funding, you'll be taking roads away. So I'm going to go back up to two thousand and twenty-two's page. So you'll see that, for example, what's a good one? So your equipment, two eighty, one thirty. So if you go to your Schedule A equipment reserve, that's the same number that's being used to finance this year. So every one of the allocations that are being utilized correlate to Schedule A, B, C, or D. Okay? So capital is used for capital. There are some exceptions in the operating reserves. Jumping around a little bit. You're unallocated. So the eight hundred and ninety-two thousand that's coming out of unallocated reserves is a combined. Some is going to capital, some is going to operating. The items going to operating are CAO, new CAO position for six months. Senior management team restructuring. Acting pay for the acting treasurer and the cost to have, have me prepare the, the budget and do some year-end stuff. So those are the majority of the items going for operating. Everything else is capital dollars. What'd you say? I'm, I'm a small part of the eight ninety-two. Unless somebody has specific questions, this is a summary, like I said, of everything that's on A, B, C, and D. I'm going to say the same message that I, I've said before in some of the other schedules. I can't emphasize enough that a reserve policy needs to be drafted. You need to look at the values, the end values of these reserves at the ten-year mark. You may have reserves that have too much. Okay, well, let's reallocate. You don't want to get into departmental building. I love the way it's all encompassing, all equipment. So you're looking at it as a municipality as a whole. I think there's a good starting point here, but I do think there's a bit more work to be done. Yeah. I, I, and me, if it was me, I'd be getting rid of AMP. I'd still be going the quarter of a percent per year, but I'd be making some hardcore decisions that, out of that quarter of a percent. So much goes to fleet, so much goes to equipment, so much goes to facilities. I think you need to just take it that next step further. Yeah. Okay. Any specific questions on reserves? I guess the only other thing I should highlight is the end balance. So forecasted end balance on capital reserves is four point three million. So we're going to go from five point five to four point three. Operating reserves going from five million to four point three million. And again, it was highlighted on, on the roads that OCF is only in there for a couple of years pending future commitments.
The modernization fund, is that?
It's, it's sitting in deferred revenue. Actually, Erin and I were speaking about that yesterday. We are utilizing it for three items in two thousand and twenty-one. And there's already been a couple of items identified, was it, was it the East Grab? In two thousand and twenty-two. And Erin's been keeping track of it. And I think you're getting close to utilizing majority of those dollars, aren't you? Okay. So that's reserves in a nutshell. It's sitting in deferred revenue. Yeah. You leave it in deferred revenue, and then when you draw it in, then it becomes Cut.
But when we do that in various, whatever it's allocated to, wherever we use it, there's some criteria to it. But that's a, it's a bit of a seed money, right? Because once you do that, it becomes part of your budget. You pay for it this year to engage in it or whatever. And I'm going to just put it aside, but we paid for that out of the modernization.
Correct.
But there is an ongoing expense.
Correct.
When we do that.
Yeah.
You have to be aware of that.
Absolutely. Every time you touch the one-time dollar funding, you need to look at future operational costs. And setting aside through a reserve policy, future replacement costs are the same, not just operating. Yeah. Okay. Good to go? Payroll. So first off, just before I go review where we're sitting now, I just want to go over some of the, just the highlights. So what's incorporated in your payroll is obviously there were several collective agreements were settled in two thousand and twenty-one. So you had cost of inflation. You had an EHC premium increase of twenty-four percent, which is equivalent to a half a percent levy increase. You have a new position of CAO in here for six months. So that means in two thousand and twenty-three, you will have an additional six months of tax burden. There was other changes in here. There was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight positions that changed either in hours or classification. Initially, you had three new positions on a permanent basis, still prorated for the year, as well as a part-time position. Those four positions have been removed at this point. So the net of all that brought us down to a nine point four percent. So that's a nine four point, nine point four percent, two thousand and twenty-one budget over two thousand and twenty-two. It's worth noting that currently eighty-three percent of your labor force is already at top of the grid. So with, by next year, possibly there might be one employee the following year, you're going to be like ninety-nine percent at top of grid. So on one side, that's great. That means you've got long-service employees. You're retaining your staff. On the other side, that's, there's a cost factor to that. So the cost of the six months for the CAO will be a one point two percent levy increase. So before you even make any decisions, next year, you're going to have a one point two percent levy increase with that position. So some of the decisions that were made between senior management finance were to fund the senior management restructuring out of unallocated. So currently with all of those decisions in a nutshell, your payroll tax burden supersedes your property tax burden by nine point four percent. So we made a few decisions. We got it down to a tax levy impact to be six point eight percent. We're going to fund the senior management restructuring decisions from unallocated because those are one-time things. So in a couple of years, those issues are going to go away. You don't need to build them into your property tax burden. So that's equivalent to two point eight two percent. So you're ending up with a net levy impact of all your payroll decisions of a three point nine eight percent levy increase. So that, in a nutshell, should be the impact to your operating budget without looking at materials and supplies, utilities, inflationary factors, such as what's been alluded to here on, on vehicles and equipment. So the starting, to get us to the starting point of what should the levy increase be, we began with six point eight. We got it to three point nine eight by making some of those hard decisions. Now what I've done is just summarize the impact by individual departments. So we're not identifying any individuals. We don't want to be doing that. And just noted on the side, for example, in the clerk's department, whoa, fifty-seven percent increase? Yep. You got a CAO position in there for six months. That's forty-four percent of it. So just highlighted some notes for you to be aware of why such an impact on individual So my, my message to council is, when you make decisions throughout the year, please be cognizant, not saying you shouldn't make them, but please be cognizant of the, of the impacts on your levy when you get to your budget deliberations. Mike?
Fair to say, fair to say, since this represents such a high proportion of the, the budget that some, some significant increase, like the three point nine eight percent is going to be needed to, to basically build that capacity for next year. Like if you don't make any gains this year, then you're going to be even further behind by the time the other half of the CAO comes in next year.
That's correct.
So, so it's sort of building some room in your budget to support that restructuring in, in the following years.
That's right. So if you don't, if you have a payroll burden of, an additional increased payroll burden of three point nine percent, if you don't build that into your property tax base, you're going to continually going forward, looking for areas to save. Not leaving any other movement in your operating budget for utilities, materials and supplies, fuel, parts, looking at your reserve policies. You're not giving yourself any room to look at anything else. When you have a budget that is payroll burden heavy, and I'm not sure the exact percentage, I'm going to guess it's probably between sixty and seventy percent. Most municipalities run between fifty and sixty. Some do run upwards of seventy percent. That's, that's the norm. That's the environment that we're in. When you provide the type of services, it's labor intensive. That's, that's municipal government, right? So when you make those decisions, of course, you're going to get hit hard. So you don't want to accommodate your operating budget by cutting services elsewhere because the problem's never going to go away. So you either have, you either have to find, you have to find a funding source for that. So your funding source is fees and charges, debenturing, which you never do for payroll, or increasing your tax burden. Because those are really your three main funding sources, correct? Growth. You, this municipality has not had growth substantially for some time, not even close to covering just even a one percent inflationary. Going forward, you may see it with some of the developments going to happen, but I would not, and I cautioned Finance Committee, do not take all that growth and put it in operating because you have areas to address on your capital reserves, your equipment, your facilities, your rolling stock, your roads. We know there's shortfalls in there. They're identified by doing your tenure forecast.
That's why it's so important when we make those changes in whatever it is, reclassification or jobs, that we're aware of what the, the financial impact is.
That's right. What, what the end result is. It's not that you shouldn't make them. You just need to understand them.
Where it's going to put you.
Where it's going to put you. Yeah.
Translate that out into dollars pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So does that make sense? I'm going to, I'll probably speak to this a little bit as we go through the operating, like the overall operating, unless somebody has any more questions on, on the payroll. All right. So the next one is the budget to budget. So again, I'm not going to read this entirely. But I'm going to just highlight a few things. So what this document does is say, it gives you, the department's on your left by the activities within, there's a little bit more breakdown than just one particular, like you don't have development. It works as one number. You've got several activities within that department. And it breaks it down into what's the change in total revenue from year to year, total expense, and then the total of the two together and the percentage. Then there's some notes to the right which kind of identifies why those percentages are there. Really what you should be looking at is anything that's over a three point nine because of the payroll impacts, given that not everybody, every department went up exactly three point nine percent. So under taxation, it's up four percent. Well, that's because I have a three, three point five percent levy increase in there. The next note, under clerk, thirty-four point seven percent. So that's a red flag for you. Well, that's because we have the CAO position in there, given it's only in there for six months. And then you'll see stuff like wages distributed. So when we looked at the wages distributed, we found, well, I found, areas that there was distribution happening on an actual basis, but not budgeted. So I did take a look at, take an opportunity, look at the five-year average. And we did jig a few of the distributions. It wasn't huge, but it did, it did cause a bit of variances from department to department. There's, there's notes like the beginning of the senior management team restructuring, you've got your retired treasurer. What's the other one? The two hundred and one percent. We had a reallocation of budget and county increase under human resources. So we moved the human resource department and we added the county services. So yeah, it's a high percentage, dollar value wise. It's not as big as that percentage. So those are the types of things that you want to look at on this document. What else?
And I could say the, the treasurer has been very, very diligent as scrutinizing every one of our lines, our expenditures.
So through the senior, the last time senior management team met, prior to that meeting, I did take quite a bit of time with Kevin and Mike both. Mike and I had shaved quite a bit of his parts budget. Kevin and I, we did a little bit more of his afterwards. I think you shaved, you brought it down three percent or was it five percent?
Three percent.
Three percent. Yeah. Another impact to this budget is the loss of revenues due to COVID. Kevin did take the opportunity to look at his year-to-date numbers and fine-tune those. And we did have a little bit of residual COVID dollars left in deferred revenue of thirty thousand dollars that's helping offset the net impact.
Is anything more coming on that? Have we heard anything?
No, I don't think you're going to see anything now. No. So overall, at the bottom, you'll see it looks like a two point nine percent impact. And that's just the ins and outs. So that's if you want to look at it department by department. Now the next item is the budget operating notes. And that's kind of where we're going to have a bit more discussion as to what really is impacting this, this operating budget. So first off, we have already built into the budget, we have a three point five percent, including growth tax increase. And just keep in mind that a one percent increase is only giving the municipality eighty-nine thousand dollars. Eighty-nine thousand dollars doesn't even cover the CAO position for six months. So it's not a lot of dollars. I've added supplementary tax revenues for the potential growth for the Lapine Development. That is a very crystal ball number. I think it's worth taking the risk. We know that there's going to be some tax dollars started. They started moving in, in February, and they've been staggering into the first tower. So you're going to start seeing some revenues come in. As the revenues completed, I'm anticipating over two hundred thousand dollar growth when it's all completed. That's going to be depending on impact and their assessed values. They're giving me estimates so far. Again, you want to take a look at those. You'll be taking, grabbing some of that for operating and hopefully putting some of those into your capital reserves. So that'll be a twenty-three and a twenty-four decision.
So just in regard to the brackets here.
Yeah. So brackets, that's good.
Good. It's no bracket.
It's bad. Yeah. So brackets are new monies coming in. And no brackets are new expenditures, money going out.
So supplementary taxation for Lapine, you're figuring.
That's new money.
Yeah. How much are you figuring on? You're figuring on this for one building?
For one building. Yeah. For part of the year.
For part of the year.
Yeah. Because they're staggered. They'll give you supplementary bills, so. Yeah, because they're staggered, they'll give you supplementary bills, so let's say, um, twenty-five percent of the units are, were filled in February, they'll stagger that assessed value. So it'll be, you won't even know those numbers, probably my guess is till, I can't see it being in the June run, probably the September run before you're going to know any of those numbers for sure. So these are estimates based on discussions with NPAC.
So what do, what do we think, when we're all done with this per building?
My estimate was a little over two hundred thousand. Per bill, no, no, per, in total, in total, sorry.
Three buildings.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, we have an increased to tax write-offs, we've had a particular entity that's gone through the assessment review board. They were successful for a five-year adjustment, they still have one year to go, so there will be a write-off of approximately twenty-two thousand. We did he, see a small increase in your OMPF funding. So that's good news, unfortunately, it did not keep up with inflation, it's only point four percent. So in the past, you've seen two to fours, but some municipalities have seen reductions, so I guess we better not chirp too much about that number. On the side, uh, legal costs, increase of five thousand dollars. Council entered into an amended, uh, interest rate on the promissory notes with hydro, Renford Hydro. So there's, um, a loss of revenue there of thirty-two thousand dollars on those promissory notes. Insurance premiums across the board are increasing five percent, so that's for all departments. Election and election, that's, you're going to have that, it's up and down. It just, every four years, that's, that, that's going to happen. Clerk, there's a contracted service increase of five thousand dollars, and that's for virtual meetings, which we're kind of sitting in right now. The cost of, of equipment and software and individual to assist in operating that. Accessibility contract, uh, there's compliance costs that need to take place in twenty twenty-two, so there's an increase of four thousand. We have a reduction in the town hall repairs and maintenance, and that's a basic reduction due to the renovations that are going to take place, there's a few items that won't need to happen. The town hall transfer to reserves, council entered into a staggered transfer to reserves of twenty-five thousand dollars per year for a period of three years pending the decision of the utilization of this facility, and we've already had that discussion this morning that it's going to go forward, so that's been removed. Human resource increase to county services, thirty thousand dollars. Human resource contracted services, and that's increase in legal costs, and that's basically for negotiations, twenty-two thousand dollars. Increase in training and education for fire of four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and it should be noted that there is no longer a fire college. Training has been done in-house, they need the tools to be able to do that, it could be video equipment, could be TV. Fire, uh, increase in equipment and repairs of three thousand dollars. Increase in protective clothing, twenty-five hundred dollars, and communication, two thousand, and that's basically the county dispatch. We've seen a trend in the last couple of years that that's been creeping up, so we adjusted that. There is a savings in OPP of ninety-one thousand dollars, and that's a direct reflection of the reduction in the number of crimes. And I believe that document went to council a couple of months ago, Kim, a month ago? You guys have discussed that. Okay, okay, so you guys were already aware of that. Uh, bylaw enforcement, um, there's, we've seen a trend, a reduction in the cat and dog license sales and the parking fines. Development works, parts various, uh, we've had that discussion, that total was, was quite a bit higher and having the discussion with Mike, we brought some down, um, some of it is due to increase in cost, some of it is due to increase in the age of the equipment. Increase in culvert, five thousand, patching and washout, three thousand, paved street resurfacing, five thousand. Uh, litter bins, thirty-eight hundred, uh, I didn't put it out on there, but that's because there's some damage that needs to be replaced. A reduction in the sidewalk maintenance, again, I did take a look at the five-year average and felt that, um, the taxation in that area was just a, a bit too high, we weren't spending the money there, so we brought that down just a smidge. Snow removal, and that's construction material, five thousand two hundred and fifty. Landfill, and that's a straight contract, nine thousand nine hundred and ten. Household hazardous waste contract, four thousand dollars. Landfill licenses and permits, so this is, this is kind of a big one, this is something that we need, that should be looked at. When we looked at the averaging, there has been a huge reduction in landfill permits. So that's the use of the landfill, right? I don't know if Mike, you want to speak to that, because that's kind of a, a big impact.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's kind of one of those good news, bad news situations, the less, uh, material you're bringing in, then the less, uh, tipping fee, uh, revenue you're generating, but also the longer the site's going to last, uh, you know, so with greater diversion, um, you know, COVID had a bit to do with it, people were at home a little more, probably doing more recycling, managing their, their waste a little better. And essentially, uh, I think we've overestimated the amount of revenue and that we've seen our revenues dropping, so, so we could, we could pad the budget essentially by, by anticipating we're going to get see, uh, higher revenues, but the reality is we're probably not going to get those higher revenues, so therefore this, this adjustment here is being, you know, forty-five thousand dollar reduction in the estimated amount of revenue is probably going to be more hidden what's, what we feel will actually make on revenue.
And, and probably should have been adjusted a little bit last year.
Yeah.
Should have come down just a little bit last year, just to slow it in a little bit.
But is that not kind of good because it prolongs the life of our, our landfill site?
Yeah, and, uh, it's, it's like a lot of, uh, a lot of our costs are, are pretty much fixed, right? We still have to have the staffing there, we're still operating the equipment, uh, you know, maybe a little bit less equipment on fuel, but essentially, a lot of our costs are fixed, so, uh, you know, it's going to last longer, but our, our, our costs are higher in relation to our revenue.
Okay, uh, again, further at the landfill training and education, there's a three-year certification, SWANA, I don't know if I spelt that right, Mike? So that's, has to happen this year. Contracted service increase of five thousand dollars and a little bit in parts again, four thousand. Recycling, uh, we do have an increase in revenue, again, that's looking at the average, so that's a good news story. There's the thirty thousand dollars I refer to for the loss of revenue in the rec department. So if you go, as we go through, you'll see the reductions in revenue, that thirty thousand dollars is going to help offset that reduction. So you shouldn't see that again next year because we back up to twelve months of operation. So skating oval, so, um, that's just a, a small increase in cost of, of operating that because that's a, a new venture. Fitness memberships, we're anticipating loss of ten thousand dollars, gymnastics, fifteen thousand. To help offset the thirty and the other, uh, we brought the contracted service down by nine. Rec rentals, we're going to have a loss, estimated loss of eight thousand, arena summer rentals, seven, ice arenas, arenas, rentals, I'm getting tongue-tied here, eight, and bringing down arena building repairs and maintenance, five thousand dollars. Excuse me. Planning fees, there's, uh, when you looked at the average, planning fees have been going up, and I guess that's a direct correlation of development. Economic development, um, there is a, it's a grant, I believe, eh, Kim, for this, excuse me. The net after advertising, you're doing a couple of things there in economic development?
Yeah, the, for, one of the things was Driftscape, which it's going to be, uh, revenue, it's going to be a cost to us, but then we're going to be selling advertisement that will, will help offset it, so a net of twenty-seven fifty, and the other one was our, our, um, initiative for a standalone economic development website, against, it's a, it's a subject to RED grant, under RED grant, and we're hoping through, uh, through grant, you know, the end cost again, three thousand dollars, uh, so. And also, I think there's some use of, uh, modernization in, in that program as well, so. So small amounts of money, but materially impacts the, uh, the economic development budget.
And then the, um, new item that I've referred to on the last slide that we're going to finance the senior management restructuring because it's, it's not, should not be built into your tax burden. And the net of that is seven thou- seventy thousand eight ninety. So if I listed every single line item, this number should be zero. Right now, it's thirteen seven ninety-nine, because it's just the highlights of the changes. So that's pretty good. You got a cough again? Sorry.
Can you just speak to the cumulative so that people understand?
Sure.
But that's a combination of everything and
Yeah.
with staff in there, I mean, even if they weren't doing that activity like the oval, then they would still be doing something.
That's right.
Still doing, but it just allocates it out, right?
It does, but the way, so the, this has nothing to do with the wages at all, this is everything except wages. So if I come, if I went line by line and I compared twenty twenty-one budget to twenty twenty-two, these are the highlights of the difference within each department. So a credit means I have more money coming in. And a non-credit means I have an increase in expenditures. So the running total of all of those, so I put in the three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That's your starting point, so the running total of each adjustment brings us down to essentially, I should have a surplus of thirteen thousand seven ninety-nine, I'm not going to, because I have a line that might have went up by a hundred dollars or another line that might have went up by two fifty. So the accumulative will net out to zero being we have a three point five percent levy increase. Anybody have any questions on those? Okay. So in summary, a one percent levy increase is equal to eighty-nine thousand dollars and change. Your twenty twenty-one property tax levy was eight point six, that's not PIL, it's your property tax. Your proposed twenty twenty-two levy increase with growth would be nine million fourteen thousand. So three thirty-nine, two twenty is equal to a three and a half percent levy increase, and that's, that's got your growth in there too. Your growth was, was basically non-existent, there was a little bit, but not very much. So the next slide is the twenty twenty-two impact on your median typical property, which includes county and education. So there, you, you do have that by a single piece of paper because you can see it a bit better, I'm going to bring that up too. So if you pass the budget with a three and a half percent levy increase, your average single-family home would have an increase in their tax bill of seventy-two dollars and sixteen cents, which is equal to a two point eight four percent levy increase. And the reason that happens is education is not going up, it's zero. County's going up one point seven five. So when you merge all of those, it ends up with an overall impact of two point eight four percent. So even though Renford would be increasing three point five, you're only increasing a portion of the tax bill. So education, if it doesn't go up, you grab that education room. If the county doesn't go up as high as you do, you grab some of their room. So what ends up happening is an overall impact of two point eight four percent. So if you paid around twenty-five hundred dollars in property taxes last year, you're going to have an additional seventy-two dollars added to your tax bill. So that includes the county and the education. One point seven five percent. Zero, so the other things to keep in mind is the role has been frozen, and it's supposed to be frozen for an additional two years due to COVID. Education has been frozen for this year, don't know what's going to happen. Yes, the market values are increasing, um, as everybody can, has, can see. But if the market values increase and everybody increased at the same level, you would still have the same end result. You will not see the shifting of what the trends that have happened in the market value until that role becomes unfrozen. So that could be twenty-four, that could be twenty-five, before you're going to see the implications of what's been happening in the market in the last twelve months. Yep, correct. Yep, so really, this is really an opportunity to compare apples with apples, because you're not seeing any market changes because the assessment role was frozen. So you're really comparing this year to last year, whereas in a reassessment year, you would see some dips and valleys, you could see shifting in between property classes, you're not seeing that because the role's been frozen.
There hasn't been any, uh, any impact to the OMPF, uh, funding, we're still getting kind of the same amounts or just slightly higher amounts from the province?
Yeah, well, we, we received a point four, we, we are aware that some municipalities have dropped. There's been the threat of removing that funding for many, many years. That funding replaced, if you recall, the old unconditional grants oh, twenty-five years ago or so, so it's, it's been in place for a long time, they did do a service realignment when they replaced the unconditional grants. They did, they is the province, they did say that, uh, this isn't a, a forever type of funding. Who knows when that will ever, if ever be yanked out from municipalities, I, I'm not aware of, haven't heard any rumors for a long time, but then again, I've been out of it for a couple of years too.
So, so the M funding is probably over a couple of million dollars?
Yeah, it's just a share, just a smidge over two million.
Yeah, so, so essentially, that constitutes like about twenty-two point five percent of our overall tax revenues
Correct.
from that provincial funding, so.
Yeah.
If that was ever removed or lowered substantially, then, then we'd be in deep trouble.
Yeah, plus if it doesn't go up the two plus percent, like it hasn't this year, point four, it's impacting us as well because the change was only ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, point four.
So we have to absorb that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, so you're absorbing the inflationary, the, the, the inflationary gap on that.
I believe in that, uh, in that particular fund, they, I think they have about five hundred million dollars in the whole fund. And they haven't changed that number, uh, at one time was five hundred and five million, and then they could drop back to five hundred million. I know that, but then when they do your, uh, assessment of each municipality, some municipalities will go up a wee bit, some will go down a wee bit. But the actual fund coming from the province, I think, has been set sort of at five hundred million now for a number of years.
Yeah, and if you go back to the implementation of that fund, it was when they did, when they removed social services from the municipalities and they did that whole local service realignment, that's how that fund was developed. And that's got to be at least twenty years ago, so I don't know how long those dollars are going to be there, but again, we don't have that crystal ball. A lot of, a lot of what municipalities do is depending on provincial funding, right? Uh, it's also worth noting that your, uh, single-family house is almost ninety-seven percent of your tax base. You don't have a lot of commercial industrial assessment here. Um, it's, it's great that you're having the, the developments that you have, but it's always going to hit your residential. And that's pretty norm for Renford County across, you know. Um, another thing worth noting is the growth rate for the county was so much higher than Renfro's that even if I just look at the county share, we're, we're pick up less of the county tax burden because our growth rate. As you've seen, Lapine development come in and a few other subdivisions, you may see that the town of Renford residents start to pick up more of that tax burden. So again, this is a good year to look at apples to apples, because you don't have any of those other variables in the mix right now, but you're going to. A little bit in twenty-three, a lot in twenty-four. And I guess is, when is the Hall Avenue extension happening, what year? Twenty, twenty, so again, so you'll have a little bit of a, a lull, and then you'll have the same issue again in twenty-six. That you'll start to see shifts in your tax burden as those developments happen.
Yes, and I guess we always make the point too with our, our taxation rates, uh, you have to be careful when you're comparing to other communities.
Yeah.
Because our waste management costs are all included in our taxes, uh, where there are many municipalities in the county that have separate tax levies, uh, that wouldn't be reported in their percentage increases of their taxation.
Some have that and some have just flat-rated, uh, fees added. So you might have a flat three hundred and fifty dollars added to your tax bill, for example.
In Renfro, it's, it's basically for all
It's built right in.
Waste management included.
Yeah. Kelly had a question?
Actually, I just think, I'm just wondering about clarification, I was just looking, it's probably the way I'm reading it, um, in the payroll, Um, in the payroll, uh, the library, does that include that part-time position?
No, it does not. All, all of the part-time positions have been removed. All, sorry, not the part-time, all of the new positions that were requested were removed.
So there's been no new?
No new position, the only new position in the budget is the CAO position.
Okay.
And I guess, based on Kelly's comment, it's probably a good time just to mention that, yes, that's, that's correct. We did have, and Jennifer identified it earlier, approximately, I think it was four capacity building positions in there at, at six months. They've all been removed. I know Kelly has come before the finance committee, um, I was gonna say, earlier in the week, I'm losing track of time, it was this week or, or last, but has come to the finance committee and, and certainly asking for reconsideration and importance of that position, based on some of the pressures and the realities of service delivery in her department. So that still hasn't been resolved, or there certainly hasn't been an answer communicated back. So where we're sitting at today is with it, with those positions all stripped out, with the exception of the CAO position, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Kelly?
Yeah, and I would just like to note, it's not even, I think, when it's, when it, we're at the point at the library where it's not even capacity building, it's actually reduction in services that we're looking at. Um, because it's been, as I said, I think it was nineteen ninety-eight, the last time the library had a, just a part-time position added. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty, it's gonna be a tough year.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, not, if, if nobody has any questions, there's just a final recommendation from the senior management team. You want me to go ahead with that?
I guess so, yeah.
So the final recommendation is that the twenty twenty-two operating budget accommodates a six-month cost for the new position of CAO clerk, and further that the twenty twenty-two operating budget accommodates several payroll changes, including the recent adoption of several collective agreements as identified in Schedule F. And further that twenty twenty-two operating budget incorporates continued transfer to reserves at two percent, plus point two-five percent for asset management. And finally recommends the levy increase for twenty twenty-two be three point five percent. So if, if the budget went to council in the form that it's in, it would be a three point five percent town impact and a two point eight four percent total impact to the property taxpayer. Single-family house.
Okay. So I guess that becomes a motion that will go to council, am I correct?
Yeah, so we have to certainly discuss our next, our next steps. Obviously, unless there's, um, a need to revisit anything and a need for another follow-up meeting of, uh, of community hall, or finance for that matter, um, we need to determine our, you know, if we're meeting next week or, or when we're meeting for, for the adoption of this budget.
If there's any modifications to any of these schedules, I, I would request that it be by resolution, so that I modify each individual schedule to bring it forward to council.
Yes, Tom?
Okay. Um, I'm just wondering, I know with the Treasury Department changing and stuff, how come we didn't get a chance to do like we normally did, where we got to see, and like we said, take that out or add this, or change this? We didn't get to do that this time?
Why did we not?
Yeah.
Because the chairs of the committees never brought it forth to do.
So we can't look at each department and say, okay, we're gonna, you know, we haven't spent that in five years, so why is it in the budget? Take it out.
You can go back to, uh, the chair of your committee and go through all that if you wish, but it was never brought forth to have done.
I just thought that's the way it was always done.
And we always used to, but.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, you're referring to more of a line-by-line review approach, and I think, you know,
Yeah.
obviously, we're, it's always the goal to gravitate away from that, um, on municipal budgeting, but, um, certainly, I think we're here, our managers are here to answer any specific questions on our, our departments, but, yeah, that wasn't, that level of detail, we didn't, we didn't get into that level of detail this year and, and tried to summarize the departmental changes on the, on the, on the schedules you've seen today.
No, thanks.
Just to clarify Kim's comments, saying we didn't get into it, but we didn't get into it with, at the committee level. Uh, certainly, we did get into it with Jennifer, uh, in comparing sort of the actual expenditures by year. And the one sheet she did summarize with all the changes, that's a result of that, that, you know, you, you didn't spend this last year, or you didn't spend it the last three years, so why is that budget like that? So there was that rationalization that did occur through, through Jennifer. Uh, and, uh, we found over the years, the line-by-line, uh, when we push come to shove, we would sit down for hours, and the, the findings in those meetings were very, very minimal. You get like twenty or thirty thousand dollars by, you know, through hours of discussion, where I think it happened through Jennifer being sort of somebody coming in new that could look at all the different accounts. It's a little bit of a different process, but I think it achieved exactly the same thing, where if you look at all the operating costs, percentage-wise increases over the overall expenditures, I think you'd find that, that it's much less than two percent overall departmentally, that, that, in the operating expenses.
Which I guess is actually a reduction considering level of inflation. Noticing that diesel's two dollars and twenty cents a liter when I drove in this morning, so.
So just to clarify, the, um, the overall recommendation is three point five?
Correct.
Yes? And that's the two point eight four plus one point seven five?
Correct.
Okay.
It's gonna, well, because, because education's zero, we grabbed their room a little bit.
Okay, so it's three point five?
Yeah.
Can anybody remind me of what we, what our tax, what we raised taxes last year? Yeah, I can't either. Yeah, it was close, Erin, or you got it?
Very, very close to, yeah, between the two, eight and, and three.
Okay, so it's
I think it was two point eight.
Yeah.
If, if, um, if I had my druthers, I'd be going up. I wouldn't be going down. I'd be budgeting for a hundred percent of a CAO position, because you're deferring that one point two percent tax increase to next year. Um, but I, I understand the, the constraints. I understand that some members may or may not be running for council, and you don't wanna make that decision or tie the hands of the next term of council. But because it is a apples-to-apples property assessment year, which doesn't happen very often, it is an opportunity to, to grab that education room and not have a huge, huge burden next year. So if you see, for, just for example, if the health benefits went up another twenty-four percent, we don't have that crystal ball. And, I don't know, if OMPF, we had a reduction of a half a percent, you already, you already know you're starting with one point two for the CAO position. You know, on average, you're around two percent for cost of living. And if insurance goes up another point five, so if council asked me what my recommendation would be, I'd be increasing it, it even more to cover that CAO position. But I understand doing it in a, in two steps, six months this year.
Some risks here?
Yes.
Negative and to the positive, and the positive being when that growth comes online.
That's right.
And, but we have to be knowledgeable about that, that's gonna increase the requirement for services.
That's right.
Yeah, so, but there are some other things, like the, um, archives.
Yes, that, that's a good example.
Which is, uh, under review at this time, and whether that comes through or not. And, but there's a big enough push on, not by our little one archives, but places like Petawawa that have the military base, and the city of Ottawa that has many federal buildings. They're not, they're in a big problem losing that money.
Yep. Yep.
So I just have one more question for Jennifer.
Mm-hmm.
So when you say you would go higher, how, what is, what is your magic number? If this were you making this decision, and you wanted to budget for the whole CAO position, what would that magic number be?
I'd be adding another one point two percent to it.
Okay. Thank you.
For the CAO, yes. Town portion. No.
So what would that, Jennifer, correlate into the two point eight four when you incorporate?
I didn't, I didn't calculate that.
Too, uh, difficult to try to extrapolate.
Did you, do you have OPTA open, Erin? So are you at the levy change? Do you want me to come over there?
Maybe when Jennifer gets back, this, this sheet we're looking at, the tax tools, this is what's called OPTA, and it's a very good tool that I don't think council's seen maybe before. But it is a, a tool that staff can use to plug in, plug in, uh, tax rates and, and see the real impact to, instead of seeing it as a per hundred thousand, it's seeing it as the, what's called the average, in this case, single-family home, the average twenty twenty-one, twenty, or twenty twenty-two CVA, current value assessment is one sixty-five in the town of Renfro. So it's based on the average, I guess, home. And, you know, you could use your own home, for instance, and what your CVA is on that, to try to, you know, figure out, do some math, yeah. So if your CVA was double that at three hundred and thirty, um, then it would be roughly double the seventy-two, sixteen annual impact.
Okay, so if you added the other six months of CAO, the total impact with county and education would be almost three point seven percent. So you'd be going from two point eight four to three point seven, just round, we just did real quick round numbers.
So a levy change of four point seven, which would result in a three point
Seven percent overall impact.
Thank you.
Well, my opinion on it is, and I'll always have this opinion, I hate when we tax people for money they're not using in the, in their year they're being taxed for. I don't think it's right. I never thought it was right. I've seen that happen so much in this, uh, my last eight years, where we've taxed people for stuff we haven't used, and I'm totally against that. I could never vote in favor of this budget that was in there. I think twenty twenty-two, we should pay for expenses of twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three, we pay for the expenses of twenty twenty-three. That's my own personal point of view.
And further that, we're not really paying for, well, I guess we are. The CAO is the problem here, and
CAO for, CAO for six months is not here. So are we gonna put that money in reserves for next year? And then only have to pay him for six months next year?
Yeah.
And you're not talking about the allocations to reserves? I mean, that's financial planning, right? You're talking about exactly what you just said.
CAO, yeah.
Six months of the CAO or twelve months of the CAO.
If you're taxing for a full year this year, when are you, next year, you're gonna tax them for a full year and keep that money in reserve forever? You know, it makes no sense. In my opinion.
Yep, yep, there, there's two sides, there's two sides to the story. Yep. It's, it's just what, when do you want to start building the tax, the payroll burden into the property tax burden? Because you know right now, the payroll burden supersedes the property tax burden. Sorry, the future property tax burden, because you're not there yet. So you're doing it in two stages, six months, six months.
On the other side of that coin, we have, we have a clerk's department that constantly reminds us that they need a little help. We've got a library over there that hasn't seen an increase in staffing or, since ninety-eight, twenty-four years ago. So really, we, we, we have a need. We have the ability, at all these finance meetings, we've discussed what the ceiling would be, what the ceiling would be that made sense for us moving forward. We, we know what kind of history we've had over the last two years of this damn COVID and loss of revenues in the rec department and so on. Now, now we're in a position where agreed upon at committee level that three point nine or less was where we wanted to be, no more than that. Don't commit at four, commit at three point nine, or three point eight, or whatever. Now we're at three point seven, we could be at three point seven, and possibly address the library's need and maybe a bit of the clerk's need. Uh, you know, so that's sort of the other side of that coin.
Well, my understanding at, uh, committee level, we, uh, agreed to three point nine, or it was discussed at three point nine for the Renfro share only. And then I asked a number of different times at the committee meetings, what's the overall? Which we were never given that figure. So it was only the Renfro end of it we were talking about at the time? So that would bring, uh, the Renfro end of it well over four percent if we meant that. And the CAO, and I, I don't disagree with, the library has an issue, the clerk's department has an issue, and that should be dealt with, and probably sometime during this year, it should be re-talked about. But at the end of the day, we're talking with the CAO here. So if you're talking about paying a CAO and taking six months' salary, what are you gonna do with that six months' salary? Put in a reserve fund for all this whole year, for the rest of this year? So then you have it in reserve fund for next year? Like, if you're gonna talk about the library, you're gonna talk about the clerk's department, that's a whole different conversation, in my opinion, that's.
I guess one, uh, option would be to, to not address the CAO, but maybe to consider a position like the library's position. And I'll just clarify, when you say clerk's, uh, it was capacity for the CAO coming in so to have some ability to, to look at the admin, finance, um, operations and have an ability to make some quick decisions, or some, some support positions. Um, and I think I've mentioned it before, as far as the CAO, um, you know, obviously council wanting them to function at a, certainly a strategic, uh, high level, as opposed to a, a, you know, a working manager, which we've, we've, you know, used that term many times, as far as what senior managers are currently.
Yes, and I, I was just gonna add the, the point, like, we're talking about the CAO and a half a year's salary, but the municipality's getting, like, we're very, very early into a restructuring process, right? So there's, you know, we're, we're currently recruiting a treasurer that we anticipate being able to retain a treasurer for a certain financial amount. We're, we're talking about the existing senior managers retiring and, and with a, a hopes that you're going to replace these positions at significantly less salary and, and, you know, combine in a restructuring. So, so the restructuring plan isn't, isn't worked out to the level of detail that, that you, you can, you can say you don't need that money, or you're not gonna need that money going forward. I think there's gonna be lots of changes. Uh, it's gonna be very fluid. I think any capacity you build this year will help you in, in, in this year and future years to, to meet all of the, uh, the staffing requirements, be it in the clerk's department, the library. Uh, there's gonna be a lot of changes, uh, and there's a lot of unpredictable things, like what are the salary expectations of, of new people feeling, uh, filling these, uh, these top management, uh, positions? And it may not be, you know, as what the previous consultant had anticipated, that your cost might be actually higher, so. So, you know, any room you can build now, I think, would, would help you. But I understand the, the mayor's point for sure, and.
Well, there's no doubt, if you go back seven or eight years ago, we had the same type of problems. It was always, you know, we talked about, you know, next year, uh, what do we need for money? Like, we, you go back to infrastructure, road and infrastructure, we had nothing. We had nothing for road and infrastructure eight years ago. And we started building capacity for that, but we did it through a certain format. And when it comes to salaries, though, salaries should be based on this year. Next year should be based on next year, because that's your actual cost. To start taxing somebody for something that's not being used, that's not fair to the people out there. Totally unfair to the people out there, in my opinion. Something like that, uh, that Kelly is talking about here, and we talked about that at the committee level, it might be a possible savings at the fire department this year that can maybe offset something to help her fire somebody part-time. And we haven't really addressed that here tonight. And we haven't really addressed that here tonight.
No, we haven't discussed that at all.
So, there's a possibility of that still happening, but, you know, at the end of the day, this particular budget says one thing and, you know.
So, we had discussed...
We had that discussion at finance and I understand the gist of it and I know that you did have a little bit of time to look at it.
Yeah.
I don't know, because it's a personnel issue, is it something we should be in camera about? But I really feel a little bit of an obligation to let the members of council who were not at the finance meeting share in that, so you don't feel so up against the wall, you know, when we're looking at where we might make those changes or where we might have some savings to accommodate exactly what, what might be there.
And for me to speak to that, I would have to speak about individuals. To, to give examples as to the dollar value.
And that's, we can speak positions, could we not go in camera because it is related to those positions and...
I believe so.
Is that a possibility? Just, I, I think it's very important that both Arlene and Tom be privy to that information, that there, there might be a window there.
Uh huh.
You know, so as I say, you don't feel so up against the wall. And I mean, that was a discussion that went on at the finance meeting.
Uh huh.
And I think that's, if I wasn't on the finance committee, I would feel a little sweated that I wasn't, that wasn't shared with me. Anyway, that's just my...
Were we not able to generalize enough without having to get to that detail as far as there's potential savings due to, in one department, due to...
A restructure?
Yeah, well, due to, you know, retirement of older members and, and bringing in younger members at, at, at lower, at lower wages. Like, just keep it, I think we can keep it at that level.
Yeah, I can keep it very, very high-end.
And, you know, the difference, the difference being if, you know, if I'm hearing council or the council wants to, you know, maintain what we're looking at today and potentially try to address items like positions, like the library with some savings some, from elsewhere so we're not touching what we're looking at as recommended today, then yeah, I think we can have that conversation.
Sure, I'll go ahead then. So, definitely there would be, we looked at the, the cost for six months. There would not be sufficient doll, dollar savings within the fire department to fund that, but there would be sufficient dollars to fund it on a part-time basis. So, if we were to reallocate a portion of the fire department wages to library, that's doable without affecting the 3.5 for 2022.
So, it'd be nice to have them numbers, exactly the cost of a part-time for six months and the savings for six months on the...
It's $22,000, the part-time number that we looked at, and the potential saving...
That was for a whole year.
No, no, it was only for six months and...
Full-time person, it's $88,000 a year for...
Forty-four. Half a year is 22.
That's part-time.
That's right, Jerry.
I thought, I thought we had part-time down around 10,000.
No, we looked at, I can't say the individual, we looked at an individual and that individual was 44, like a comparable individual, but that was for a whole year, so if we did it for six months, it was going to be 22. And there is definitely at least savings in fire of 26 for one year of 26,000, it's doable to reallocate and, and to do that.
Is it preferable to deal with that as part of this budget discussion or to deal with that as a standalone item outside of this?
You can, you can pass this budget here and you can make that decision and you don't move your budget over, you just have one department over budget and one department under budget, knowing that council made the resolution to do that decision. So, you don't have to stop your budget process. You just need to know that there's, there's, I, I would do it in this budget process, but if you don't want to hold up the budget process, you can make that decision later, knowing that there's, there's salary room in one department to move over to another department. Did I confuse you?
No, but I think we need to get on with this budget, I mean, because of COVID and many things, we've been delayed and I think that that's what today was about, is kind of getting this to a point where you can, or the finance department can put it together and get on with it.
First of all, when, when you're hiring any person within municipality, there has to be a report come to council. So, the report that we got at the committee level should come to the council level and that's when the decision can be made. And if we can find the money to do it, we find the money to do it. Doesn't have to hold up this process.
And I'll have that number, those numbers ready for when that report comes through.
Alrighty.
So, Ken, if there's more questions, certainly feel free to ask. However, I guess the next big thing is the scheduling of, of our council meetings, special council perhaps to, to adopt the budget and get it, get it finalized. If that's, you know, if I'm hearing everyone's kind of in the, you know, is fine with, with what's been presented. So, we are meeting May 10th, there's an ex-regular. There has, you know, there's some discussion that may be advantageous because of staffing. You have a couple of members of staff, one that's not going to be around too much longer and one that's going to be absent at least for a short period of time soon as well. So, we're looking at, well, as early as the possibility of next Tuesday is a special meeting. If that isn't doable, we can look at an alternative date next week or obviously, May 10th is open for consideration as well as, as another option. So, did council have any preference on, on meeting?
Would it just be a meeting to deal with this?
If we did a special, it would be budget-only. That would be next Tuesday or an alternative day next week. But if it had to be the 10th, then it would be a regular meeting with, with other business. I would assume that we'd take a similar approach for review, but condense down quite a bit more. I think the two absent members, if they want to get, you know, more detailed, we'll make arrangements for them to, to come in and get their questions answered, but we'd, you know, we would certainly look to fly through, not fly through, but go through the budget a little bit less detailed than we did today for, for the special meeting.
So, the only thing about, I, I think you should, you need to ask Peter if he's okay with next Tuesday because we're interviewing all day.
Yeah, I did give Reemo a heads-up on it, he didn't, he didn't advise that it was, it was conflict, but yeah, certainly can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
May 3rd, 7 o'clock.
So, we will look to probably get a notice out this afternoon of a Tuesday, May the 3rd, special meeting of council at 7 o'clock?
There is already a planned meeting at 6.
Okay.
Maybe we can move that up to 4 or something.
Yeah, I don't, well, it, it will be, it will be done before 7.
Okay.
And there's no committee adjustment, right?
No.
Is this in-person meeting?
Leave that with me. For the members here today, is everyone available for in-person? Open to in-person, okay. We'll clarify that, make sure we have staff available and we'll, we'll strive for that.
Okay. So, we don't need any motions or anything here to move it forward or?
Only if you want to change any of the schedules.
Only if you want to change anything, so it's as presented, so I'm comfortable in seeing, seeing us take this forward as a, as a report on a special council meeting agenda.
Okay. It's good then.
Okay, so I'm, we're still streaming, so if there's any other conversation you just want to have right now, please do and I'm just going to have the, the meeting ended off our YouTube channel and...
Anything else quickly?
And if, and if anybody has a question between now and then, after your review, just give me a call. Be happy to answer if I can.
Okay. Anyway, then I guess it's about 1:48 and we're now adjourned.
Do I just turn the TV off? But do I turn the TV off? Okay.